I call this March 13, 2017, Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the February 27, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of the February 27, 2017, regular meeting as submitted. Second?
Your motion, the second. Any other discussion? Hearing done? All those in favor? Okay, it's now past the hour of 7:00 PM. We have Senator Harriet Chandler, State Rep. Daniel Gregoire, State Rep. Harold Norton, discussion of legislative priorities. And Harold's running a little bit late, so we'll start without him, and he can jump in.
If you want to go.
This is a yearly, a yearly thing we do where Northborough decides on some priorities that we have, and we send letters to our senators and representatives, and they come in once a year and talk to us about our priorities. I'll turn it over to John.
Sure, just to expand a little bit, in terms of the process, we begin this probably about four months ago. We send letters, the board sends requests out to all department heads, all boards and committees, asking for any legislative priorities. Now, these could be mandates, they could be proposed legislation that we oppose, it can be legislation that's coming forward that we would like to advocate for, but basically it is a comprehensive attempt to bring forward the priorities of the town of Northborough for our legislators. As you can imagine, there are hundreds of issues that you deal with, as we do. Our job in this process is to try to synthesize that down, and we like to try to give you a top three that have the biggest bang for the buck and the most impact on the town of Northborough. And then there are a few other smaller pieces of legislation or initiatives that we either would like you to be aware of, or we're hoping that you would advocate for. Those who are in the audience, there are extra copies, I'm not sure how many are up there, but there are extra copies of the letter if you'd like to get one so that you can, you can follow along. Through the chair, and with the chair's permission, what I'd like to do is sort of outline the top initiatives and then, or priorities that we have, and then certainly the chair can open it up to discussion and back and forth, but just to get everybody on the same table, or to set the table, rather, get everybody on the same page of the top priorities.
Do you want to do them one at a time, or do you want to do all?
Well, no, let me just go through the top three, and then we can kind of have a discussion, I think would be the best way to do it. So, you come every year, first of all, thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to come in and meet with us. The priorities that you see in here are going to look pretty familiar to you because these are the same top three priorities that we had last year. The first one is an increase, a request of an increase in our Chapter 90 authorization. Statewide, the governor has said that they want to release $200 million in bond transportation funding for Chapter 90. For those of you in the audience and at home, that's the primary mechanism by which municipalities fix their roads and infrastructure. In many communities, that's the only funding that gets used for fixing roads and infrastructure. A couple of years back in Northborough, we did a comprehensive pavement management analysis, and we know we need to spend 1.1 million to keep our roads from deteriorating any further than they are. At 300 million statewide, that's about 800,000 for Northborough. Coupled with our local appropriation, we are at the absolute minimum that we need to maintain our roads. Unfortunately, a couple of years ago, that was bumped up to 300 million, and now it's back to 200 million. The problem is at 200 million, and the Mass Municipal Association's done a statewide analysis on this, at that level, we're dramatically underfunding and maintaining, and not maintaining our infrastructure. So, that is, that is our top priority. We've spent a great deal of time, Scott Sharpton here is in the front row here, he's our DPW director, he's in charge of our payment management plan, it's something that we spent a great deal of time working on. This year, we are finding additional, we're using some free cash, some available funds to backfill that Chapter 90 reduction, but we really need that to be permanent. So, that's our, that's our top priority. The second one is an increase in the Circuit Breaker Special Education Funding. Superintendent Christine Johnson and business, school business manager Cheryl Levesque are sitting here in the front row as well. They can certainly speak to this in any level of detail that you would find necessary, but as all of you know, the governor's proposal is to level fund Chapter 70 at 70 percent reimbursement. So, level funding it, first of all, it's at 70 percent, not 100, which is what we'd like to see. Second of all, level funding it means inflationary costs, the cost of special education going up, it's effectively a reduction. And this, as we all know, through our budget discussions, has been one area of our, of our local budget that's been growing faster than other areas, and with the state not only increasing its percentage, but level funding it, we're losing ground instead of gaining ground. You have all the numbers in the handout in terms of what this means for us, but if it went to 100 percent funding, it would be an additional 384,000 roughly for the K-28 school, and another 88,000 for Algonquin Regional High School. And if transportation were included, which arguably should be, that would be another $760,000. This is a significant issue for us, because as you know, it's a, it's a zero-sum game in terms of resources. We've got an excellent school system, we've got an excellent special education program at both the K-28 and the high school level, but this is a mandate and a requirement from the state, and we need to, we need more help if we're going to meet that without drawing revenue, without drawing resources from other regular education sources. So, that is our second top priority. The third is, we're asking for some assistance in a way that doesn't require the state to expend any additional funds. We're asking for OPEB reform. Essentially, OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits. These are retiree benefits, and if you've read the paper, I think the TNG had, the headline above the fold was, "The City of Worcester Cannot Afford Retiree Benefits." It's, it's going to gobble up a larger and larger portion of the operating budget. The town of Northborough, we have done several things to get our OPEB costs down from 90 million down to about 34 million. This is an unfunded liability that the town faces, and the board's very, this has been a priority of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for several years. We have set up a trust fund, and we have, we have put in, and we have in our base budget 500,000 a year going into that trust fund. The problem with this issue is we can't fund our way out of it. There needs to be some reform, much like pension reform a couple of years ago, where it's graduated now, it's based on whether you're full-time or part-time, how many years you serve, and, and how long you serve, you get a graduated benefit. Right now, and this is in, the town of Northborough doesn't control this, under Chapter 32B, Mass General Law, if, if an employee retires at 55, and they've worked at least 20 hours per week for 10 years, they qualify for health benefits for the rest of their life, some share of that. What we're looking for, and what the Mass Municipal Association is advocating for, and we hope that you support, is, again, a graduated plan like a pension, based on how much you work, the number of years, and your age, you get some percentage towards that benefit, not an all or nothing after 10 years. And again, this is probably the single biggest financial issue facing municipalities right now, and we can't fund our way out, we need some help on your end. And the best part about this one is, other than political will, it doesn't cost you anything. But it does, I do fully acknowledge, as the board does, that there are employee groups that have a, their perspective on this issue, but like everything, we believe that compromise, just like we did on the municipal health insurance plan, and we did on pension, is achievable. So, those are the top three that we'd like to discuss with you tonight, and, and I would just note, we do have a couple of smaller things that we are asking you also to be aware of. In general, we'd like you to oppose unfunded mandates, because despite the requirement that, that they get funded, there, there seems to be another unfunded mandate that makes its way through in one form or another annually. We've asked to modernize the procurement laws. We always say we pay a 30 percent premium for the same type of work you do on your house, or private businesses we do, we pay a higher rate, and that costs the taxpayers more. Ambulance billing, I've added a memo attachment from the fire chief, there's a couple of pieces of legislation that are out there. One would have insurers paying patients directly instead of the ambulance company, in this case, the town of Northborough's EMS service. And then also, the governor has proposed capping municipal ambulance rates at the Medicare/Medicaid rate, which on the surface sounds great until you realize that basically it's just shifting the costs onto other folks. And in the case of Northborough, it would mean about 100, according to the chief's analysis, about $145,000, $150,000 reduction in the fees that we use to pay for firefighters and ambulance equipment and so forth. So, this is very troublesome for us. We hope that you would support the municipalities and allow us to recover fees appropriate for the services that are being provided. So, I hope I didn't go too long, but again, we're focusing primarily on the top three issues, but, but we'd be interested in hearing whether or not you support those initiatives that we're requesting.
I thought there was one more.
Oh.
Someone's on agriculture.
Somebody's pointing. There is, yes, we do have, Senator Chandler has proposed, I didn't turn the page, Senator Chandler is working with us and proposing us a Senate Bill 407, which has changed the oversight for agricultural composting operations from the Department of Agriculture to DEP for a variety of reasons, as you are all well aware of, so. So, with that, turn back over to the chair.
All right. Yes, sir. Nice to see you.
I'm sorry, good to see you. Did you already talk about the bill?
No, we haven't talked about anything yet.
We just kind of like set the table at this point in time.
Excellent.
So, we've just gone through the letter at this point.
We'll take, we'll take one at a time, and address one at a time.
Yeah, sure.
You had a chance to look at the priorities letter that we had sent you.
It's the same one for 22 years. I've got it memorized by.
You do? Okay. Then you should have the answers.
If only we could knock some of them off and move on.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could.
Another 22. Oh, God.
So, let's start at, we'll start at the first one.
Chapter 90.
Chapter 90.
Do you want me to go first? Gus, I'd be happy.
I'd love you to go first.
I would agree with you on, actually, really in agreement with you in just about every one of these. The problem is that we have to find a solution for our infrastructure needs. I think we all understand that. I'm hopeful, I mean, the governor allocated 200 million dollars, he's looking at the budget from probably November, December timeframe. Revenues were not that strong in November, December. I'm hoping that as we move closer to April, which is the heaviest tax year, we will have more revenue coming in, and by the time that the House, and finally the Senate, does the budget, we might have some more money here to, to, to handle this. Unfortunately, transportation is not the most sexy thing in the world. It's the most necessary thing, but it's hard to get, it's, it's hard to deal with this. We also have a deteriorating infrastructure, as you know, and we have to do both, we have to, we have to figure out a way of paying for both. So, I agree with you totally, and hopefully, hopefully by the time April and May roll around, we'll hopefully see some more money here, because I know it makes a difference to you.
I just want to first thank you, John, and thank you all for putting together such a comprehensive list. I know we talk about this every year, we all wish that all of our, our city and our towns would do the same thing for us. And I realize that we're having a lot, to a large extent, the same conversation that we have when we come every year, but I think it's our job to continue to have these conversations, because we know that this is still a priority for you, and clearly, it's also still a priority for us. I think what Senator Chandler said about the lagging revenue is important for right now. It's hard for us to make a long-term commitment to this kind of funding source when we don't know what the revenues will continue to look like. I do think one thing that's really important to point out is that the administration in Washington campaigned on an infrastructure package, an infrastructure bill, and infrastructure funding, and we, last week, had a meeting, and we plan to hold their feet to the fire on that, and make their promises come to fruition. So, we are going to be looking to the federal government for help, where we are an older state, and we face New England winters, like tomorrow, good luck, by the way, everyone. I'll be at my house with my shovel if anybody wants to come by and help me out. So, I think it's important for us to advocate as a whole to the national level that we need help with this, because where we haven't been able to continually meet the 300 million, which is what the cities and towns need, per mass municipal and per your annual requests, it's time for us to start looking elsewhere, maybe, and get a little bit more creative. So, I think that's something that we're interested in doing, as well as, you know, the continual hope that our revenues get better. I think we need to start to look at outside-the-box ways to try to figure this out, whether it's federal funding, or whether it's perhaps getting the money from someplace else. Although I do have to caution that with this, and with the Circuit Breaker funding, and with all of the funding that we face, according to what we have heard, the estimates for what the repeal of the ACA and the replacement, we could be looking at somewhere around $300 million for healthcare in the state of Massachusetts in the coming timeframe. So, we might have a lot bigger problems on our hands than just what's on this piece of paper in the very near future. So, I want everyone to be cognizant of that, and I hate to be the bearer of bad news, I should have let Hank tell you that, but I think it's important for everyone to be cognizant that that could be coming literally down the pike in the very near future, so I think we all need to keep it in mind. Do you have anything on Chapter 90?
I do, but, you know, on the ACA, I mean, they're screaming now, the Congressional Budget Office came out today, that, you know, 14 million people are going to get knocked off of healthcare. I mean, there's only 20 million people that took advantage of Obamacare, ACA, whatever you want to call it, and, you know, I've seen estimates from the 300 million up to $2 billion worth. Mass Health, Medicare, it's 40 percent of the state budget, and a significant portion of that comes from the federal government. And why I'm speaking of that in the context of Chapter 90 is it's just one big pot, and the people in this Commonwealth, and there's a significant senior population in this town, have come to be used to their healthcare. So, the question becomes, are we going to step back up if the new administration goes in the direction that they're promising to go? So, that'll have an effect, every single item on this list, and we have actually knocked a couple off, I've got it right here. And as far as Chapter 90 is concerned, one of my, and I've expressed it here before, one of my big bugaboo's has always been the MBTA. My district, from here west, gets, gets very little use out of the MBTA. Actually, Northborough is probably the town, one of my six towns that probably has a good number of people that utilize it over in Westborough, but other than that, how much, we support that system east of here, and we, and how much comes out of the state budget and the penny office, you know, the sales, you know, it's, it's a tremendous burden to me that I think the rest of the state shares, that we, we don't, it's not a payoff for us. I'm glad to, you know, it doesn't pay off for us. I'm glad to see the governor making some moves to economize there, you know, breaking the contract with the current provider and moving forward, but to me, that's, that's a source. If that gets better, that's run better, that's going to free up money for the rest of our infrastructure, road and bridge infrastructure needs. That's beyond what my colleagues have added, that's about what I can add to Chapter 90 right now. I mean, the House will be taking up the budget in just over a month, a week after school vacation week. Hopefully, we'll have some better idea, as, as the senator said, the February figures were disappointing, and hopefully, March and April will provide us some better things to talk about.
Go ahead.
So, thank you very much for being here, we very much appreciate it, and it's good to see you. So, is it a fair statement, then, would you say that even if, if the revenue does increase or improve toward April, that really, this is not an area that will necessarily get some of that because of the other bigger issues that you're mentioning? I'm hearing a little bit of kind of negativity.
I think you're hearing that we, this is an important issue to us, but we will have other issues that we will have to consider. It's a balancing act, I mean, I think that's the only way we can look, talk about it. We don't know what's coming down the pike. We're very concerned about block grants replacing regular grants for, particularly for education. That is going to be of grave concern, so that it is not just healthcare, it's education that we're going to be concerned about, and we're going to have to balance this. And hopefully, you've made your point early, and we understand this is very important to you. Perhaps, maybe you might want to take some sort of a consensus in terms of how you feel about some of the other issues that we might be facing, and let us know about that. That would be helpful to us.
If I may, through the chair, just one point of distinction here, we're talking about revenues in real time, and just like the Board of Selectmen, we talk about our operating revenues for our operating budgets, and then there's debt to deal with, capital stuff. So, I know the revenues are important in terms of this operating budget, but Chapter 90 is a debt mechanism by which we would fund this. So, just like, you know, I don't know what the revenues are going to be like for the next three years, but we still issue $25 million in debt to the Lincoln Street School. That's an important distinction here from maybe the Circuit Breaker that I think needs to be made, and as I know you all know, like we do, if you don't fix the road, it's $25 a square yard versus $2 to maintain. That's why it is appropriate to fund something like that with debt with a long-term perspective, and we're not looking to take operating revenues. But of course, if you have debt service, we understand it builds into your operating, but again, if, it seems like lately, if we're always just focused on the current fiscal year's operating revenue, you wouldn't issue debt and never build anything, but the cost will get more down the road. But I appreciate everything that I've heard.
And to that point, I just want to add that I think, as a general consensus, there are very few towns that are in as solid a fiscal shape as Northborough, so I think that might be part of the concern as far as the amount that we're talking about, not Northborough per se, obviously, it impacts you, but I think there are a lot of communities out there that are not on a sound of footing.
Questions on the first item?
I just wanted to make a statement, just a comment about the infrastructure, too. Harry mentioned the word sexy, but infrastructure, actually, to me, is, you know, when you see these articles about bridges that are in terrible shape, I think one that I recently saw, something like 400 bridges in the Commonwealth that are in need of repair, and that's kind of terrifying in a lot of ways. So, when you think about, you know, parents and their kids and all sorts of people on the roads today, that's, it's, it's very scary. So, anyway, I implore you to do as much as you can, because it's a big deal.
But I think that's, I mean, as Harriet was mentioning, I mean, the whole New England area, I mean, we get hammered with winters and, you know, assault on the streets, and the problem is not putting money in. We've put a system together where we, you know what I mean, we put money in every single year, we do work on the roads, reclaim some of them, we patch some of them, we seal coat others to try to keep up with it, but, and then if you don't keep up with it on a regular basis, then that's what happens. I mean, you get 400-plus bridges that are in real bad shape that need to be repaired, and if you wait so long, it costs three and four times the money that it would if you stay on top of it, and that's our point in Northborough. I mean, I know, I realize, Danielle, some other communities don't stay on top of it like we do, but we're very concerned, you know, for our roadways.
Well, that's to your credit.
Right, no, that was, yeah.
So, it's frustrating for us when things get cut, and it's like we have a plan in motion, and all of a sudden, we have less money to do the work, so we have to go back and try to figure out where we're going to get that money just to stay up, you know, with our roadways, so. Okay, so, number two. It's Christine's favorite, Circuit Breaker, which is always a budget buster for the town of Northborough.
And I glossed over it, I don't know if you want, if you have specifics that you'd like to add or to the discussion.
Other than thank you to all of you, it is a familiar discussion point that you've gathered together this time of year, and certainly for us, with the consideration all through the year, and I think Representative Norton said it very well, that it's something we see each year, but what we don't see are the same numbers, and those numbers only go in one direction, and that's up. And a part of this whole Circuit Breaker reimbursement is, in fact, they are actual expenditures that we are reimbursed for through the process that, process that's defined. And there are so many aspects of Circuit Breaker that we talk about each and every year that could afford some benefit to the towns. One is the Foundation Budget Review Commission, that clearly identify a low-cost basis, which is out of reality in terms of what our costs actually are for that threshold amount. And also, a reoccurring thing is that we're not reimbursed for transportation, which can almost be, in some cases, equal to or more than the actual tuition, which we talk about transportation again in a different way. And then also, the what are reimbursable claims? I think leaving this in with the unfunded mandate conversation, while not necessarily part of the reimbursement formula, there are so, there's so much regulatory language in the special ed program about mandated specifics that are really opportunity costs that really are and do affect the entire budget. If you're having folks providing services to students, and they are for all of our students, a disproportionate amount of time, often time, is spent, not because there's not, there's a need, but because there's mandated language embedded in those services. So, I'm wondering of all of those opportunities, which might have the most likelihood of having some legs through this process? And if not that, has there been any discussion about whether or not, just like the Foundation Review Commission, it's time to take another look at the language we're embedding in the regulations, which could free up some funding in the regular operational budget?
Could you expand a little bit, you asked a question, or you threw out the data point of what are reimbursable claims? What do you mean by that? Is that?
Well, it's the over the threshold amount that we know, and then there are special services that are provided by specialists throughout the year that may trigger a potential reimbursement for those specific services, and that's a special process that, in fact, I think, Cheryl, we're involved in that right now, where the numbers and those totals have to reach a certain percent above 100 percent, is it 124 percent or something this year? 125 percent off. Would trigger another potential level of reimbursement, and those are for very specialized services that the schools provide.
How much, and do you get a lot of pushback on that, a lot of disallowed requests?
I'm not sure if it's the disallowed request, it is, it is the aggregate dollars to reach that potential for even reimbursement consideration, that might be a little bit lower.
Not to pull this meeting too far into the weeds, but maybe we get together if, if we make that more flexible.
Absolutely.
And change those figures, so you're dealing with the same basic pot of money, but make it more accessible coming in the front door, or the back door, however you want to look at it. So, why don't we go down that road?
Great, that would be a great opportunity for conversation.
Harold, you mean drop in the threshold amount?
Yeah.
More can be reimbursed?
I mean, it's, that's something that can be done administratively, working with Dessie, and as opposed to doing it legislatively or budgetarily.
I think that would be a great way to take a look at the problem that we discuss each and every year, and then I heard Senator Chandler say, change some of the language in the regulations, right?
Right.
That's easy to do.
Right, and I think a lot of these restrictions that come onto you are regulatory as opposed to legislative, so that's something that we would have to.
Well, and this is, this is why this is important.
Right, absolutely.
You know, we'll, we pass the budget, we pass statutory language, and then when it gets promulgated, it doesn't, unless we hear from an administrator, and this, this is thematic for our state government, you're not always 100 percent sure how it's getting implemented, so.
If you show us the pathway, we'll walk down it with you, and we're looking forward to finding some solutions.
If you could send us some language, that may be a starting point for us.
You can do that, right?
Tomorrow.
Right now, you have to.
Once you close everything down, you just focus on this tomorrow.
No event or no event, I think we'll just, I think it's already pre-hylighted.
That's it.
No problem. Thank you very much.
So, do you want to add anything else to that portion of the?
Well, I just think it's important, you know, and it goes to the overall conversation about unfunded mandates, and I know that a lot of the mandates that the town faces, the school department faces, are unfunded mandates, but I think it's important to realize or take note of the fact that over the last several years, the legislature has begun to realize that, and really tried to stem the flow of those to cities and towns. I worked on a project last year with a member of the Board of Selectmen in Westborough, he came up with a list of all of the unfunded mandates for schools in particular, and is working with Dessie on a project to sort of try to roll some of those back where possible, so this might be a good place where these two roads could come together. As you know, last session, I served as the Vice Chair of Education. As you know, last session, I served as the Vice Chair of Education, so it was something that I worked on specifically on an education front, but this year, I'm no longer serving in that capacity, but I think it's something that we are very cognizant of, and I think you need to know that, just because everything that comes to us, we say, how much is it going to cost, and where are we going to get the money? That's part of the reason why sometimes legislation takes so long to pass, because anything that's going to cost anyone, any money, goes to Ways and Means. And with the way the economy has been the last several months through a couple of years, we haven't had any excess revenue to do new things, so we've been very cognizant of that and cogent of that, and trying to make sure that we're not putting additional burden on the town. So, hopefully, that's working, and if there's anything specific that you see coming that you think, you know, is making it through the process that you're concerned about, I would encourage you to reach out to us through the open dialogue that we continue to have, to make sure you voice those concerns. And I'm sure the MMA is on top of it as well, but I just think it's something that we are also always aware of.
Not to skip off the agenda, but that's the Fire Chief's memo, which you received tonight regarding those, the changes in the reimbursement rates. I mean, that's a prime example of something that he became aware of. He let me know, we've added in, we had a general statement in the Legislative Priorities Letter that you received, we now have more specifics in there, and we have, more importantly, we've done a cost analysis to show it's going to cost us, you know, $150,000 a year if the governor gets his way and caps the reimbursements for ambulances at the Medicare Medicaid levels.
And I think that, not, again, to kind of go away from the agenda, but I think those are pieces of legislation that we've seen before and that have stalled for the reasons that you bring up, so I have hoped that they'll continue to stall and...
And we appreciate your support on those.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Any questions from Circuit Breaker? Go ahead, Jason.
I'll just make the observation, the transportation costs are actually a very substantial percentage compared to the educational service delivery costs, and you really can't separate the transportation from the educational service delivery. The transportation really needs to be addressed as part of the reimbursement package. We're facing very substantial dollar amounts here, just in our districts, and I can imagine it's a similar problem throughout the economy, so. Appreciate your help.
Thanks. All right, so the last one won't cost you any money. Let's talk a little bit about the OPEB reform. December of 2012, there was a special commission charged with studying this, they issued a report. Again, this would be a way to, much like pension reform and health insurance reform, a way to give municipalities the tools to manage this extraordinary financial burden. So, again, I'll just stress, the town of Northborough has done everything that it's supposed to do, but regulatory reform is going to be an important piece of the pie to make that, to make that work, so.
Well, we started down the road with the Municipal Modernization Act of last year, which came into effect on November 7th, and I think, but you guys had already done, even prior to that, everything with your trust fund at that point, so.
Right.
Is, is that just of no use to you at this point, the changes we made with that? Have you already done...
In terms of the investment abilities within that, we were already taking advantage of that. The issue is in, the issue is in how the benefits themselves accrue, and, again, as I said in the beginning, I understand there's different perspectives on that, but that's nothing the town of Northborough can, can impact, that's based on Mass General Law, and I think most people would think it's reasonable, for the same reasons you made, similar changes during pension reform, to make sure that people aren't checking in for a short amount of time and walking away with a lifetime benefit, that it should be graduated based on years of service and age and how much you work, that that's a reasonable way to accrue a benefit like that. So, I think that's, that's the crux of the, of the reform that we're looking for.
And for me, and I don't want to speak for anyone else at the table, but for me, it's a natural progression. We've done the pension, we've done the healthcare, we need to take next steps. You know, we want people to be able to trust in their government, and this is a way we can take a step towards getting that trust back and working with folks, and I think that it's, you know, we might not be able to give you everything that you want, but a step down in an overall reform package is something that's necessary moving forward.
I think just much like health insurance, we want to keep it on the forefront. We understand that anything that's going to go through is going to have to be some, there's a certain amount of compromise involved, but just want to make sure that stays on the front.
Absolutely.
You've done so much work on this already for us, that it's an enormous help. It's a starting, it's more than a starting point for us, and I think that is something that we should... I was, on the way here today, I was listening to Worcester, city manager, talking about this very same issue. He's handling it very much the same way you are. He has a fund that he's, that they've set up in the city. It's very similar, but they too need some help in dealing with this, which is what you're saying in this.
I just, well, it's a comment kind of question, and if there are, if help is being sought by cities like Worcester and Northborough, is looking for some changes in how this has gone about, what's happening with other communities who really aren't getting things together in terms of getting this taken care of? It's almost a scary thing to me, and I think I've asked this before, but I, ultimately, I hope that Northborough doesn't end up having to, you know, accept more of the burden. I don't, I hope, I hope that that would be the case, but I do wonder what's going to happen with some of these communities who aren't really able to pull it together.
It's probably time for us to look at this across the Commonwealth, rather than town by town, city by city. This, I would say that this is an issue that all of our communities have, and it is probably exactly the right time. I mean, pension reform has had the same issues attached to it. I would say that you might hope to see something like this. I would hope to see something like this.
If I may just interject, this is not special legislation, a home rule petition that we're asking for. This is to amend Mass General Law to impact everybody, and what we're asking for mirrors the commission in the Mass Municipal Association, so that's, that's absolutely what we're looking for. Again, it doesn't cost money, it's a regulatory issue.
I guess I'd just like to ask, this, as you said, this was like kind of a natural progression following pension reform, is there any particular resistance against further reform in this, in this particular area, or...
There shouldn't be. There really shouldn't be. Can you see any?
I wouldn't call it resistance, I would call it, I mean, we started with, I mean, you guys took the lead with many things you do in this town, you know, prior to this new legislation that passed last year. This is a start on a statewide basis. It's just, it's the legislative process, it's the deliberative process. Sometimes it takes several cycles for an issue to kind of reach a boiling point and get broad-based, not necessarily broad-based support, but broad-based knowledge, and it's a learning curve, and it's, people get frustrated when you say, you know, we're going to be on an issue very shortly, when you say things don't happen quickly. It's a deliberative process, it's the way it was set up, you know, before the founding of the republic in this, in this state, and sometimes it takes two, three, four legislative cycles to, for things to germinate and things to build up to a, get a level of momentum that the, in agreement, because you are talking 160 House members, 40 Senate members, and a level of agreement on what can be done. I said, the pension bill took years and years to get around to, and it's getting kind of a, a shared opinion by a lot of different people, so it takes time.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, and I've heard the words a natural progression, and that it should be looked at. Is anybody looking at it yet? Is there...
I, I just made a note, so I don't see that there's a piece of legislation that's been filed, so I think, I mean, that doesn't necessarily prohibit us, but that's my, you know, first step when I go into the State House on Wednesday morning, is to talk to some folks and find out what it takes to get some legislation together. Obviously, you have to start from a, you know, a point, and it will, as Hank said, it will kind of go through a process and be amended, but, I mean, I think...
I mean, understand, it started. Last year, we passed legislation on the Municipal Modernization Act of 2016, which allowed some basic tools for cities and towns that aren't as progressive and forward-looking as you are here in Northborough to, and encouraged them, and this was all done through work with Nick Dowling, who's, Nick Downing, who's kind of the legislative guru on this, this subject matter item, subject matter, and with the MMA, to encourage cities and towns to start setting up these trust funds. So, it's on, it's on the radar screen, it's started, but we realize that that's, that's not enough. It's, as John said, we're going to come in, you know, from the other end and look at the approval of these benefits as people proceed through their public service careers, and that's something, you have a lot of stakeholders at the table for that, you're going to have, you know, educational leaders, public safety leaders, unions, we're going to want to have a say as we go forward with that. So, what we did last year with that Modernization Act is just the foundation to allow us to move forward, but it did raise a red flag, you know, and kind of gave other cities and towns a little slap, say, hey, come on, we're all in this together, you've got to get moving. So, it's, it's, again, going back to my, a lot of stakeholders in this are given, and you're going to have people that aren't going to want to give up how their current benefits are set up, and that's going to take a lot of give and take.
And it's, again, another instance of where Northborough is kind of ahead of the game, and so you are on the forefront of this and paving a path, and you might get frustrated because there are so many other cities and towns like the Chapter 90 and the transportation funding.
So, you see a lot of opposition, Harold, is that what you're saying?
I see a lot of discussion, but, but I think people are realistic as well. The healthcare reform, employee healthcare reform took three election cycles, and I was at the center of that because I'm Chair of the Public Safety Committee, so I dealt with all the fire, police, and, and public safety unions on it. The pension reform took at least, at least five legislative cycles, so it's because there, you know, everybody wants to say, everybody wants at the table, this is going to affect people's lives, you know, people put five, 10, 20, 15, 20 years of public service in to municipalities, so it's, yeah, they're going to want to have a say. Is it opposition? It'll start, oh, is opposition, absolutely. Anytime you try to take, anytime you try to take something away from somebody that they used to have, and, you know, they're not going to be happy about it, but you keep the conversation going. I mean, I could keep here the rest of the night with some of the inside stories on, on how we got to the healthcare reform. I still, I still have, there are still some public employees in this district that don't talk to me because of that, because they feel they have something taken away from them.
But perhaps the, the time is, is right to begin that kind of discussion by bringing the communities together, by bringing representatives together to talk about how they, how they plan to do it, how they plan to get there. That always works. Unfortunately, it's a, it's a big step, I mean, it's a very big step, but it can be done either through legislation or it can be done through the budget, and it's still not, you know, we're now into the, our legislation, our early legislation has been filed, so it's a little late for that now, but it's not too late for a late file, and it would be something that, you know, we probably should consider to, to bring it forth, and if not, if it doesn't work that way, we can always do it through a part of the budget, even as an amendment to the budget. When you have people sitting around a table, you learn a lot of things, and it, it works, it works. If nothing else, it raises the level of understanding of the subject matter. Different communities look at this a little differently, you know, and...
I think a lot of people, I think they push, a lot of communities push it off to the side because it's such a monster.
Very.
You know what I mean?
Right.
That they don't want to deal with it.
If I could add, just one thing, it's positive, we've had this, you know, these conversations year after year, and, and they're important to have, and because they're important issues and to keep them at the forefront, but one of the ways that we were able to fund, in part, our OPEB trust fund is through the additional optional hotel and meals tax that the legislature made available to town of Northborough, to all municipalities, but we...
But you took advantage of it.
So, we had significant economic development, and we came up with a plan to divert that additional meals tax, which now everybody's almost consistently implemented for our OPEB trust fund, so that was a big piece of it, so I thank you for that, and I thank you for the conversation of, I realize these aren't easy discussions, and there are more people at the table than just us, so, but again, we want to keep the conversation going. No, I just don't know if the Fire Chief has anything he'd like to add on the ambulance building piece, because that, that's critical.
Actually, if I may add you up one or two things I'd like to add, which is, I think something that really tells how important this is to the communities is the group that met last week and went and spoke with Ways and Means. When you can get the Fire Chiefs Association, the Mass Municipal Association, the Mass Ambulance Association, the professional firefighters in the same room agreeing on the same item, that's a miracle in and of itself, and when they're all saying this is a problem...
So, take all those groups and multiply them by 50, and that's the number of people you have to deal with on OPEB.
Without question. I just think that that really shows you how important this is to us, and while, well, John threw out the amount of money, I think it's important to realize that's over 26% of our EMS income, and that EMS income is utilized for staffing, for materials and supplies. You also saw what happened not too long ago with EpiPens, right?
I don't have it either.
Well, we still have to pay for those, and the price has gone through the roof on a, on a lot of this stuff, so we still have to be able to pay for that and provide the service. The Medicare Medicaid rate doesn't even cover what the cost is to fuel tanks, and it's just, it's a concern that that funding is, we either have to reduce some services or find other sources of funding.
Did you guys get in to see the governor?
I do not know if that group got in to see the governor or not.
That's...
That's where they need to go. Yeah, I'll speak to it, keep the poll, see what happens, see if that's the next guy.
He handed me, he was at, in a bad time the other night, he handed me a big, it's like, you know, all the background. I mean, this is Jim Cantwell, Rep. Jim, I call him, he's been a big leader on this for, I think this is the third time he's filed...
And it's gone back and forth, as you're saying, it's died, but our concern is we don't want it to be there and get stalled, we want it to go away.
Right.
And each community deals with those funds differently, uses them in different ways. We rely quite heavily on those funds for our day-to-day staffing and our materials and supplies, and without those, I just have great concerns of what's going to happen with us. So, I appreciate you taking time to listen.
But that's very important, $150,000 to your budget is...
A lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of money, so.
The only other thing on here, I know there's some folks here in the audience that are interested in the agricultural composting bill that Senator Chanish had filed behalf of town, Senate Bill Number 407. We've had some, as the board is well aware, we've had some issues regarding agricultural composting in the town. One of the things that we've asked is to move the oversight for that from the Department of Agricultural Resources to DEP. We believe that will give much better, better oversight and control of the program. It's always difficult when the, when an agency that's entrusted with promoting something is also the regulatory agency, so I just want to thank Senator Chanish, worked very closely with the town over the last several months to, to put that, that bill together and file it, and we hope that you folks will support that as, as it makes its way through.
Well, now that the committee structure is in place, on the House side, Gail Karidi from North Adams is the Chair of the Committee on Natural Resources and Agriculture, so I sent her a letter earlier this week, which I'll, earlier this month, which I'll provide to the board and to anybody else asking for her to expedite the hearing on that bill on the House side. Bills are getting assigned to committees now, this went in February to the Committee on Natural Resources and Agriculture. Hearings are still being set up, processed very briefly, to so your eyes don't glaze over, bill gets filed, it gets assigned to a primary committee, in this instance, the Natural Resources and Agriculture Committee, and it will, usually what committees chairs do, what I do in my committee, is to kind of break them down into subject matter areas, things, you know, in that committee is, is very broadly jurisdiction, it deals with everything from environmental regulations to the seacoast, ports, to farms, you name it, so I'm not sure where within the subject matter breakdown, at least on the House side, that that would go, but I've asked to show my support for the Senator and for the town that the bill be expedited for hearing. Hearing is held, you know, push, committee members are pushed to, to, are polled for their, their vote, yea, nay, within the committee, whether or not it should go to the floor to pass, ought not to pass, this is... ought not to pass. This is being a Senate bill. And other new rules will go to the Senate first, right under the new rules?
Got to get out of committee first.
And, but we've got to get out of the committee. And there are more, why it's important that I sent the letter, not as important as the Senator filing it, but is that there are more House members than there are Senate members on any committee. So you want, you want them in support of getting a bill out. So that's, so we'll track it. Feel free to stay in touch with the Senator's office, my office, when a hearing may get set up.
So you're in support of it?
Yeah. I wouldn't send a letter if I wasn't.
Just naive, I don't know.
We, we appreciate the hard work and trying to.
The hard work was ahead.
I know, but I mean, it's putting the bill in is, is the beginning. So everything takes a while. Go ahead, Leslie.
I just want to thank you as well for doing that. I saw your correspondences over the last 30 months. And I think it's terrific. This particular bill makes a ton of sense.
I think so. Without really antagonizing anyone.
Yes.
What we're asking for is just a, a higher order of regulation for this problem.
Yes.
You should be aware of the fact that we have, I mean, we've really done everything I think we can do. We have a team of four. I've told some of the P, some of the neighbors. We have a team of four from Worcester Polytech Institute who are working on a, who are analyzing the problem and trying to find a, a creative solution, a solution that will be, will benefit all. This is a, a new set of eyes, a new set of thinking to, to the problem. So we'll see how that works out.
Well, I do think, again, through the.
Go ahead, yeah.
That John's one line, I think that summarizes the whole thing, is a regulatory agency that's advocating for something shouldn't be also ensuring compliance. To me, that's just, it just makes a lot of sense for that not to be, not to be happening. So.
Well, I, I must say that John has done an incredible job of pulling the information together. He's been extremely helpful, extremely. In his usual, very thoughtful way, he has done a remarkable job of pulling this whole issue together. He's taken very careful, he's logged very carefully the whole problem. And it makes, that will help us. I also hope that when we get to the hearing, I will contact John and let you know when the hearing is, John. And hopefully, some of you might want to come and testify on behalf of the bill.
Thank you, Joe. Go ahead, Don.
No, and I'd just like to thank you, too. This has been an ongoing problem, and the solutions haven't been easy, but at least this helps us some and gives us another tool and gives the Regulatory Commission that will look over this and with fresh eyes, not looking at two sides of the same problem.
Right.
Thank you.
If I may, just in terms of closing comments, I just want to thank our, the Senator and the representatives for all the communication that we get all year. And there's a lot that happens through your offices. Sometimes I don't think that you're aware of how responsive and helpful your staff is. That a lot of things are happening on a daily basis in terms of communication and coordination on this stuff. Some of it gets to you, but that's why you have good staff. I just want to say, they do a great job for you. And I appreciate the communication. You guys are always responsive to our requests. And, you know, we don't always have, always have the solutions immediately at hand, but the fact that we have these conversations, that they're constructive, and that people can get their point of view across, and we can, and we can maybe make some progress and compromise, I think that's very important. And I just want to thank you because you're taking your time out to come here and spend an hour with us on a, on a Monday night after what you've been through all day. We just appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Once again this year.
Good luck tomorrow.
Good luck with your shovel.
Stick around for my report when I close down hall.
I'm just going to wait until it melts.
It'll be a couple of weeks, and it'll be all gone.
Thanks, Harold. Thanks very much.
Drive safe. Good to see you, Harry.
Thank you. Good to see you.
I like that number two sticker on your plate.
Thank you.
I can always know that's you.
You always know it.
You all, folks, the long meeting's still to go. We're here all night.
You come from the beginning, you're going to stay to the end.
That's right.
That's right.
All right, it's way past the hour of 7:10. We have Kathy Jubert, Town Planner, John Campbell, Community Preservation Committee Chair, presentation on CPC Town Meeting warrant articles.
They're in the hallway.
Yeah.
The outside, the outside seats uncomfortable. I already introduced you guys.
Oh, sorry about that.
Here we are.
We're ready for you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Scott.
We're here to talk about CPA efforts for this year. Thanks for having us back again to talk about it. Very much appreciate it.
Thanks for all your hard work.
We enjoy it. This year, that town meeting should be a little less dramatic than last year.
That's what we like.
A little less long.
That's what we like.
I think it's fairly simple. There are three projects in the open space recreation area that we'll be presenting. And in your handout, it's the first two. One is continued preservation and maintenance efforts on Bartlett Pond. We approved a project for this three years ago, and the Conservation Commission recommended we do it again. So that one was easily approved. Secondly, we have a, a project by our great Trails Committee for continued upgrades and trail enhancement and new trails, trail kiosks, all towards adding to our existing trail network, which is terrific in Northborough. Those guys, as I always say, they're, they're the best bargain in CPA. They do so much volunteer work, so much effort there. I think Northborough is really blessed to have them. And then lastly, on, on the back page of your handout, is an article for the last bond payment, debt service payment on the Green Street property, or the Shunder Meadow, as we once called it. And that will complete that acquisition. And as you may know, that whole property's been developed with trails as well. And it's terrific for hiking, even cross-country skiing and so on. So that's been very successful. Any questions on?
Questions on, on open space articles?
Nope. Nope. Good deal.
Continue on.
Very good. We have one article in the affordable housing arena this year, and that is an additional $100,000 to the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. And this is a continuation of the efforts that we've done in conjunction with them, and furthermore, their efforts to add to our affordable housing stock in town. And once again, Affordable Housing Corporation has done a terrific job, Rick Leaf and his team, just outstanding effort. And this year, as you may know, they are partnering with Habitat for Humanity. They're using some of the reserves we voted in the previous couple of years. And the two buildings on 33 and 39 Main Street, which are the housings next to the Trinity Church, those will be turned into four.
Yes, four units.
Four new affordable housing units. The project's already underway. They've had the, the auction for the units. And what's unique about the Habitat for Humanity partnership is that the winning folks who are going to occupy them, they actually have to put some of their own sweat equity into the project. So they're committing a certain amount of their time to come in and do some of the work. Habitat puts in their volunteer money, NAHC puts in some money. So it's a terrific example of a partnership effort that can occur when we have some money to leverage, which is what CPA gives us. So this article really is just to add to the NAHC's reserves to go for the next project. And they already have some properties in mind. So we're, we're looking forward to that continuing.
Questions on the affordable piece? I think it's great. John and I went there at the, kind of the, the.
The ground.
Yeah. Freezing cold day, too. Freezing cold and windy. But it was, it's great. Plus Ascent Valley's in there.
Great.
Helping out too as well. And I liked that the people, the actual owners are going to have sweat equity in it. They're actually involved as well, which is, is great. Very, very unique and great. Go ahead.
Just so people are clear, this would work the same way the previous appropriations have, where the town continues to hold the money pending a, a project coming forward. I think that's worked very well for everybody. It's allowed them to move, but it also has allowed the town to maintain some assurances in terms of how that money gets used. So I think it's been a great working relationship. And the projects in the downtown have, have just been, I think, the model for how this should work. You know, we've saved some historic buildings, the facade, and the, and the way it looks in the downtown. We've provided affordable housing. And to Bill's point, the, you know, having the Ascent High School kids in there doing the work with Habitat, I mean, that's how this program's supposed to work. So again, it's, but the arrangement is such that the town has remained, remains in control of the money until a project comes forward, and that gets communicated to the boards and committees, so that everybody's comfortable with it. So.
Excellent. Then I really misspoke a little bit. In the open space area, the biggest project we have going is the Town Common, which the voters approved last year, the Phase One. And this year's article will cover Phase Two, which is the actual construction of the park, the preparation of the land, and construction of the park itself, and the, the planning that goes with that. So it's a $377,000 article, which will, you know, fund the project for its completion in the following year. People have noticed that the building came down, and that happened pretty smoothly. That was covered by Phase One, the voters approved last year. And now the land is clear, and we're ready to proceed. So if we ever get out of winter, things can start to, to move forward a little bit. But that should be exciting. I think everybody's looking forward to the beautification that will do to the town.
Looks great with the building, or the two buildings.
Good start.
Awesome.
Then in the, in the area of historic preservation, since we always must have something, this year really will be what we expect is the, the first payment on the White Cliffs project, which was approved last year at town meeting. And that will be identified as such at the town. Other than that, there are no, no new initiatives that we chose to go after because that was the, the biggest thing in the historical preservation priority list.
Yes, Leslie.
First of all, I'll do my annual thank you for being, first of, for all your work with this. And this is year number one of you being chair.
I think it's 11.
Year, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Kathy won't let me retire.
None of us will.
We just had that talk.
Are you good?
So it's settled then. Question though, because all residents do pay into this, if you could just very briefly summarize the reserve and fund balances worksheet that you put together.
Sure. Speaking to that a little, the committee in the last several years has adopted somewhat conservative policy, where rather than committing reserves into, let's say, future open space acquisition, or reserve in, you know, future historical preservation, we've decided to keep our uncommitted money in the, what's called the unreserved fund balance. If we do it that way, it means each year, we can decide a portion of that could be applied to one of the three core areas. Or recreation is actually the fourth area, where it might be a, a new park or something. But it gives us more flexibility, because once you've committed the money into one of the categories, for instance, open space, then it can only be spent in that area. And so as we went forward, in the beginning years, we were building up the reserves in each. And then we used that for the Green Street Meadow, for instance. And then we built some senior affordable, you know, housing apartments. And now, you know, we've hopefully preserved White Cliffs. And so each of those savings accounts was used well. But now we felt like going forward, we'll keep the unreserved balance as high as we can. And then each year, we, we pull forward if we need it. So we should have something in excess of $800,000 still in the unreserved fund balance. And another reserve account that citizens should know about is that we had previously committed open space funds into our own town's conservation fund. And that is for use for land acquisition or other land preservation initiatives. But by having in the conservation fund, we're able to be more nimble and move quickly. Should a parcel of land become available, or we have an opportunity to save it from development, we can, we can use it through the conservation fund mechanism with approval of the CPA, CPC, rather than going to town meeting each year. And that has been effective for some parcel of land, for instance, on Mount Pisgah, where we added to our conservation land there and other areas in town. So in essence, we have the revenue each year, which has generally been in excess of $500,000 each year, a portion of which the state matches. And then we have our, our unreserved balance over $800,000, and our conservation fund balance, which is over, also over $800,000. So we're really in good shape for the next big thing that comes along.
That's great. Thank you.
If that answers your question.
It does. I just have one more follow-up to that. I have forgotten a little bit of the detail. Is there a limit as to the percentage of revenue that can go into unreserved? Does the state say you have to absolutely commit, you know, 5% of your, of your revenue toward, you know, say, open space or affordable? What is the?
No, the only regulation that's part of the legislation of CPA is that each year's revenue must be allocated at least 10% to open space, 10% to affordable housing, and 10% to historical preservation.
Okay.
And the remaining 70%, you're able to allocate across those or into recreation, or put it in your reserve.
Okay.
As long as you commit to each account 10% each year, then you're covered, so to speak.
Okay.
So we always, when we're evaluating the applications, if we have too many, or we have some that we deem, you know, not acceptable, which didn't happen this year. But when we're looking through the applications, we try to check off, for instance, this year we had the Bartlett Pond Preservation and the, the Trails Committee article. That totaled $60,000. So as a numerical example, this year, we determined that our revenue's going to be at least $500, probably a little more. So we took $550,000 as a conservative number. 10% of that is $55,000. So we said to ourselves, we have to at least commit $55,000 to open space. Two articles at $60,000, check that off. And we went down, you know, down the line that way.
Okay.
Same thing with affordable housing. We had $100,000 application, that checked that requirement off. And then finally, the, the White Cliffs debt service would likely be the historical commitment for the year, check that off.
Okay.
The rest can go in your reserve. You're not forced to commit it anywhere.
Okay, perfect. Great. Thank you.
Don, go ahead.
When we first started this, the state was matching at about 100%. Now what do we have?
We're about 20 this year.
20% match.
And it, there's two big reasons why it's gone down. In the early years, not as many communities had adopted CPAC. Now many communities have, so the pool of money was being spread across more towns. And then secondly, the source of the revenue had not been as robust. It was primarily from a fee on real estate transactions to the state. And then the state puts that in the, the state's community preservation fund. Now there, there has been, well, it was a couple of years ago, legislation was passed that allowed the state to apply a budget, if there's any, was any, any budget surplus, a portion would go into the community preservation fund. And that did happen, and it increased our match a little bit. There's new legislation that's looking to make the revenue sources more robust, such as increasing that fee on the real estate transactions. And I think that's still pending in the legislature with some hope for this coming season. So if those things happen, we'll get a little bigger match that we're hoping for.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the example you just gave, John, about the two projects totaling $60,000, exceeding your conservative estimate of $55,000 as being necessary to meet the 10% threshold. If those two projects, you know, for whatever reason, are done more economically, and you don't actually expend the allocated amount, does the excess of that amount still count toward the threshold? How is the threshold guaranteed to be met, I guess is what I'm thinking.
Usually what happens, and sometimes this has needed to be adjusted after the fact, because either a project didn't come to fruition, it happened a couple of times. The town, town accountant will make sure that our minimum is met. The rest will go into the unreserved balance.
Okay.
So, you know, for instance, if for some reason the, the project didn't happen at all the way it approved, and there could be a reason why, then that money go, has to go back into that category to the minimum extent. Then the rest would go into the unreserved balance.
Okay.
And speaking of that, one thing I forgot to bring up, the best thing of all. Although we're asking the town for $377,000 for the Town Common project, through some efforts of some of the open space committee members, we applied for a grant. It was granted. And $215,000 will come back to the town as part of a parks initiative grant. It'll be a reimbursement grant. So once we spend it, we'll get it back, you know, as soon as the following year. So our net is going to be, you know, instead of 377, we're, you know, we're down to 162, right?
Well, yeah, just about.
160, enough, John.
$160,800 or something.
Anyway, so it's a, it's a nice bonus.
That is great.
That money will go back into the open space category, I believe.
Yes. Yes.
Is that correct?
Well, it'll go into unreserved.
It'll also go into unreserved. Okay, very good. So, I was right the first time.
Any other questions?
I would just like to add, thank you, John, for your long service on the committee. Thank you, Kathy, for your long service to the committee as well and to all the members on that committee. I'm always very impressed whenever I sit in on a meeting about how well it's conducted and how thoroughly the proposals are evaluated. So,
Thank you.
We have great projects coming through.
It's a good group, very passionate people. So, always makes for exciting meetings.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
See you at town meeting.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to bump up the public hearing ahead of our next presentation on newly proposed Stretch Energy Code.
If, Bill, if I could just do a quick intro of,
Sure.
As, as part of the public hearing, it's probably not going to be a conventional public hearing, but,
Yep, that's okay.
Kelly Brown, who, right here, is from Department of Energy Resources. And we also have Jim Barry tonight. But there's Jim, who, same thing, works with the Department of Energy Resources. Both Kelly and Jim are regional coordinators. Kelly for the Central Mass and Jim for Western Mass. So, there's a, you know, particular presentation that they're going to make to you tonight, which is, you have a handout, or at least there was a handout in your packet,
Yes, we have.
Which is pretty extensive. Unfortunately, we know that we don't have the time to go through, you know, every slide tonight. But Jim and Kelly are going to give you the highlights of the, of what the Green Communities Program is all about.
Okay.
It's something that for probably the past year or so, the planning board in particular and then also staff, we've met with Kelly a couple of different times, have, are very interested in participating in becoming a green community. It's, it's not any, you know, decision that needs to be made tonight or, or even in the, you know, very near future. We're going to town meeting with a couple of articles. I'll talk more in detail about those later. But there's a certain criteria that have to be met. And it's, it's just something that we've become very interested in, you know, as, as a community to pursue this. So, we also have Joe Acho, our building inspector here tonight. Joe's very familiar with the Stretch Code, the Stretch Energy Code, which is largely what we're going to talk about tonight, what the public hearing's about. Joe, prior to coming here, worked in Worcester. Worcester's one, is a green community. Joe's worked with the Stretch Code for a long time. And so,
I thought it was my eyes. Go ahead.
So, Joe will, Joe will be able to help afterwards to, to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
I'm going to turn this over to Jim and Kelly to begin with.
Come on up.
Okay.
Terry, you want to give them the cordless?
We have a cordless.
Is there a picker?
Just for TV.
Just for TV. Sure. No problem.
Okay, that's okay.
I'll leave you all a few words.
Okay. So, good evening. My name's Kelly Brown. I work with the Mass Department of Energy Resources. I was out here a few months ago, giving a high-level overview of the Green Communities designation and grant program. I'm with my colleague, as Kathy said, Jim Barry from Western Mass. He's been giving up, I don't know how many presentations he's done over the last five years, but more than I can count on the Stretch Energy Code. And I just think, just with something going to town meeting, it makes a lot of sense to bring it to everyone, have it on air tonight, and just give a little bit of explanation of what it means. Because it's a topic in itself, but it's always good to know before town meeting on what folks are going to be voting on. So, with that being said, I'll hand it over to my colleague, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. I appreciate sitting here for a bit, listening to you. I spent six years on the Board of Selectmen in town of Belcher Town and seven years on the Planning Board prior to that. In fact, when I was on the Board of Selectmen is when the Green Communities Act was created. And I volunteered, like some of you sometimes do, to find out more about a particular grant. And the more I learned about it, the more I said, you know, this is, we could, we could probably do this in Belcher Town. Next thing I know, here I am, explaining it to more than one town at a time. So, be careful what you volunteer for in terms of side projects.
So, as, We know all about that.
So, as Kelly mentioned, the Green Communities Grant Program was created. There's $20 million available to municipalities. This is not going to residences, it's not going to businesses. It only goes to municipalities to be spent on energy-saving projects in the municipalities in order to save energy, which translates into saving dollars, in terms of taxpayer dollars. In order to qualify to get any of the money, you have to jump through five hoops. Did I say five hoops? You have to meet five criteria. Sorry, I have to be careful. You have to meet five criteria that are in the law. I'm not going to go through all five, although I'm happy to, if you wish. The focus tonight is on the fifth one, which is what some people have had problems with in the past. Some people had some concern about the past. It's called a Stretch Energy Code. Oh, I should go. Sorry, got to go through my, my screen first, right? So, as you probably know, some of your neighboring towns have already become green communities. And as a minimum, every municipality gets at least $125,000 to become a green community. And then, there's additional money per population. So, some of your neighboring towns have received money. Those that started earlier on, not only do they get the money to start with when they become a green community, but after they spend it, they can apply for more money, up to $250,000 here to do even more projects, saving more taxpayer money on oil, electricity, diesel, gasoline. That's, that's the idea here. So, these are what some of your neighbors are doing. The Stretch Code has been adopted by over 189 municipalities across the state. When we first started, we weren't exactly sure who was going to do it. We knew Northampton and Cambridge would say yes, but who else might say yes, right? So, in the beginning, there was 35 in the first year. And then, every year, we've done a few more and a few more and a few more. The Stretch Code has been a, a bit of a challenge for many towns. The reason is, it's the state laws that's part, that grants the money, says that every municipality has to pass a law at town meeting stating that new residential construction and new commercial construction will be more energy efficient than standard. Holy mackerel, how are you going to do that? So, really, the only way you can do that is with the building code. And fortunately or unfortunately, the building code does change occasionally. And in that time, 2009, 2010, the building code was changing one more time. And every time they change it, they're also looking ahead three years. So, we already know what the 2015 building code is probably going to look like today. So, what they decided to do back in 2009 was, if you wanted to become a green community, adopt the next version of the building code. Because every year, the energy code gets a little bit more energy conservation. So, the idea is that people have to adopt the building code, the Stretch Code, the Stretch Energy Code. It's part of the IECC 2015, natural level 90.1, blah, blah, blah. I'm not going to bore you with the diesel. But again, when we first started, we had some real concerns about, well, what is the Stretch Code? Is this, is this going to be crazy? And one of the concerns was, it's going to be new and experimental. How the builder's going to know how to do this? Well, the answer is, no, it's not new experimental. It was actually based on the Energy Star for Home Program, which has been around for a long time. I know none of you are old enough to remember the last time we had a huge energy crisis and you couldn't buy gasoline, except on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, if your license plate was an odd number. And to, I know you're way too, all of you people are too young for that. I remember that myself. And when that happened, the federal government said, we've got to stop importing oil from people that don't like us and then turn it off. So, there was a lot of federal programs to encourage people to use less oil. And the Energy Star for Home Program was one of those. So, it was, it's already in existence. And when they decided to do a Stretch Code, believe it or not, they decided to use a program that was already in existence, that some builders already knew about, and that people already knew how to do, rather than invent a brand-new program, which, as a selectman, I didn't believe at first, but it is the truth. Another misconception was that Stretch Code requires tight, unhealthy homes. Because again, back in those days, sometimes the builders would just put plastic underneath a sheet rock. That was not a good idea. That was, they were unhealthy. But in the 20 years since then, we've got better products that we can use to make homes airtight. And they are no longer a problem of having tight, unhealthy homes. The Stretch Code does not require it. One of the biggest concerns many people had was, well, town residents were required to update their existing homes, similar to the Septic Channel, Chapter Five.
Title.
Title Five, ABC. So, there was some concern about that. And the fact of the matter is, it is not. So, if you buy or sell an older home, it has nothing, you don't have to bring it up to the newest, latest, greatest Stretch Code. It's not a requirement. And in fact, when we first started the program seven years ago, there was a piece of the Stretch Code that affected additions and renovations. So, if you're going to put an addition on your home, that piece of the home would have to meet the Stretch Code. Well, that turned out to be a bit cumbersome in trying to figure out, how do we, how big an addition are we talking about? Well, how much? So, the latest Stretch Code version explicitly exempts additions, renovations, and repairs. So, now, it only impacts brand-new residential construction and only impacts brand-new commercial construction over a certain size. And the short story is, so, again, a few years ago, it was a bit of a stretch. Some people were concerned. It was a little more money. Some builders had to learn some things. But over time, the standard base code changed in July of 2014. The base code's almost caught up with the Stretch Code in terms of requiring energy efficiency, in terms of the amount of insulation required, in terms of requiring blower door tests and duct blaster tests. So, these kind of things were kind of brought into the standard code, whether you were a Stretch Code community or not. And then, in January 1 of 2017, both the Stretch Code and the standard code were enhanced, revised, updated. And now, the difference between the two are about like this. So, there's very little Stretch Code. And again, if you wanted, I do in a whole hour, nothing but the Stretch Code. And we can come back and do that someday and have builders in a room or other interested parties in a room. We can go into much more detail, but I was told to try to be brief tonight if I could. So, I'm trying to be brief. So, the basic price difference,
Why are you talking so fast?
Basic price difference, to sort of get to the matter, if you built a home in your town without the Stretch Code and someone else built a new home in a town neighboring that was in the Stretch Code community, and they were identical homes, the basic price difference is about $750 to $1,250 in order to pay for the person who's doing the testing for you. So, the person who's going to help you design the home before you even build it, to see what kind of energy efficiency measures you can put into it, and do some onsite inspection of it while it's being built, and some final inspection. That person is another subcontractor the builder has to hire. So, they bill, they hire an electrical subcontractor, plumbing subcontractor, and now, an energy expert subcontractor. That person costs money. And it costs a little bit of money there. But we're, are we, we're in an investor-owned utility town, right? So, Mass Save, which we all have access to, allows to pay for a good percentage of that. These, this is listed existing Mass Save homes. So, if you built a home tomorrow, whether in a Stretch Code town or not a Stretch Code town, and meet certain criterias, there's some money available to your builder to do energy efficiency stuff. So, you do a better heating system instead of the standard one. You do slightly better insulation than the standard. You do slightly better equipment than the standard. There's money out there to encourage you to do this because, A, they're trying to encourage you to do it, and B, you're going to save some money in the long run. The Stretch Code refers primarily to energy. So, these are the kinds of things we're talking about. We're not talking about plumbing. We're not talking about fire extinguishers. We're talking insulation, doors, windows, appliances, et cetera. The process includes an expert to help design the home, do some onsite inspections, some final inspections. There's a score that your home would get prior to even being built. So, the thermometer is, is kind of a thing that, well, if you do extra windows and the thermometer drops again. If you do better insulation, the thermometer drops. You can trade off insulation for windows and make this thermometer go up and down. But when you get all said and done, you have a score for your home. So, when you go to sell the home, you can say, ha, ha, I got a 55. What do you got? Similar to miles per gallon for a car that many people are interested in today, this is like a miles per gallon for your house that is done by an outside expert that you can then use as part of comparison shopping. Again, there's a map of the folks who have done it nearby. Someone mentioned earlier, from the, from the front of the stage, the new governor says, anything that we do with regards to regulations, we have to do a cost-benefit analysis. So, we have multiple sheets of these that explain the different prices for different houses before and after. So, I'm happy to go into these in greater detail for you, probably some other evening. But we've done,
Unless you want to today. Usually, usually the biggest difference is the way you heat your house. So, one's on electric heated home, one's on a gas heated home, and one's on a propane. So, if you wanted him, you could briefly walk through, like, maybe the gas heated home or whatever you, what, how do most homes get built in North Row on the heating side? Is it gas or?
Gas and oil.
Okay.
So, this is an example, let's see. So, as you probably know, oil burners today are not spectacularly efficient, right? So, in order to get a more energy-efficient heating system, you would be nudged towards considering either natural gas, if that was available in town.
In some cases, yes.
It's limited.
It's limited.
And/or propane, because that's also more efficient than just oil. And/or what many folks are going to at this point are air-source heat pumps, which is what my daughter and her husband, they just built a, a new home in Belcher Town, the Stretch Code community. They use air-source heat pumps in a brand-new home. Thank the Lord, they're out of my cellar. They no longer, they no longer live with me. That's a good thing. They got a great score. But so, what this is, this particular sheet is talked about, if you did an electric heat pump home, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with those, are called mini-split sometimes are called. They look like a, a big refrigerator on the wall. There's a pump outside. It works like a refrigerator, actually, compression that makes your refrigerator turn stuff cold. They can also turn things hot. So, an air-source heat pump is a compression that will make heat or cold. And they've developed, developed them in the last four years. So, they're called cold climate air-source heat pumps that will work down to zero degrees and give you heat even when it's cold outside. And if you put solar panels on the roof, well, no, you're not paying anything for heat or cooling. So, anyway, if you decide to go that route, there is an extra cost to meet the Stretch Code. So, that's what this first page is about. And the second page goes in a little bit more detail about what things were changed in order to meet the Stretch Code, what the cost of those changes were, and what the offsets were. So, on the left-hand column is a list of things that you would have to do to build a 2,200-square-foot bedroom, three-bedroom home in the Worcester area, just under the normal building code. And then, the blue things are things that were changed on the right-hand side and, and cost a little bit more to do it, slightly better, to be more energy efficient than standard. And the extra costs are about $2,000. But the residential new construction program on down the bottom corner now has a $1,200 rebate to help pay for that HERS radar. And also, the heat pump had a $2,500 rebate from Mass Save and Mass Clean Energy Center to install this heat pump. And they even have heat pump hot water heaters that squeeze heat out of your cellar air and make hot water. Yeah, I know, it doesn't make a bit of sense, right? Yeah, I know. It's, it's truth. I've, because I've, because my daughter has one and I believe it. Because I've seen the hot water. So, the total incentives for this particular project is $4,000. And so, to build a home to Stretch Code in this scenario actually costs less than building it in the standard way. So, we have, we have models for air-source heat pumps, propane, natural gas for 2,200 square-foot house and for 3,800 square-foot house. That's why there's multiple pages of these in here. That one goes through and great to you. But in all of them, you'll see that there is money available for rebates and incentives that almost, in all cases, offset the cost, the extra cost to build it. And again, the idea we think about is, how many new homes do we build in town? What's the average price of these new homes? With, if it was an extra $1,000 to build it well, but we got most of that money back, are we putting the builders at a disadvantage? Are we putting the realtors at a disadvantage? Are we build, putting the homeowner? The answer is no. Again, seven years ago, when the price was more, the delta between the two was more because the old code didn't require some of this stuff. Well, then, there was some people saying, oh, maybe we'll do this later. And so, we've been going around to some towns that said, no, thank you, four, five, six years ago, and saying, well, now, maybe we, we should consider it. Because, as we've mentioned before, I think, there is money available for you folks if you say yes to it. Do we have that on this page? No, I must have missed it. It was on the first page.
The second.
All the way back. Keep going.
$145,000.
As a minimum, North Row is, we calculate you could get $145,000 based on your population. That's, that's the number we're looking for you guys. And again, once you spend that on things like lighting in a school, or a new heats, heating system in a DPW garage, or new doors in the fire station to save, we pay for that. It's not matching grants. We pay for that stuff. You, you spend that money, you get savings in electrical and/or oil or propane. You're saving taxpayer dollars in the electric bill. When it's all spent, every year thereafter, you can apply for more money to do more projects. And so, many of our towns have, have actually done that. They've applied, spent their first chunk of money and then gotten more and more and more. Is that, yep, we do. Do we get?
Did very well.
You didn't really say much about oil-fired furnaces.
Right. So, it's not impossible to meet the Stretch Code with an oil-fired furnace. It would mean you'd, so again, that thermometer that we're going to do is going to, it'll say, okay, so if the oil-fired furnace is getting like a 94%, no, no, sorry, 80-something percent efficiency, then we better put a little extra insulation in the ceilings and/or better quality windows in so that the overall energy consumption of the house and the efficiency comes up to a certain level. If you went to propane, then you have a little bit more flexibility about some of the other things you did because that thermometer is moving. So, one of the nice things about the Stretch Code is you can choose which of these energy efficiency aspects to focus on for this particular home. So, the home energy rating service is expert. And the homeowner slash builder would sit down with the original plan and say, okay, what do you, what's, what's the first score come up? Let's, let's just see what we were thinking about doing. And what's the number? And then, okay, what do we have to do to make that? Do we change the heating system? Or do we add better windows? Or do we maybe put overhangs on the south side to keep the sun out in the summer so I don't have to pay so much for air conditioning? Do I maybe shrink some of the windows on the north side? So, there's a lot of things that you can tweak in a house design that impacts the energy usage of that house that you and I usage of that house that you and I don't know. And a lot of the builders are becoming more and more familiar with, but the home energy rating service is expert that you have to hire, that's all they do. And some have been doing it for a long time through the Energy Star program, so they can offer suggestions to you on how to make your home more energy efficient to meet the minimum requirements, maybe go further. All in all, saving money, long-term.
Thank you. I think we need to have a longer explanation maybe at a different, a different time, you know what I mean? It sounds interesting, but-
Yeah, if I may, the key here is, it's a great program, and this is a program that we actually sat down several years back, probably four years ago, and we were interested in participating in it. And our previous building inspector, who is now retired, was, had very significant concerns and issues with the stretch code, in part because of the expense, but also because he felt some of the requirements hadn't been thoroughly vetted and tested and borne out. That was his perspective, and it was a longtime building inspector. So we've been watching and we've been waiting, and we're at the point now, obviously we have Joe H. who here with us, our current building inspector, the stretch code is no longer really much of a stretch at all. So that's no longer a hurdle to us participating in this program. You do need to adopt it, certainly if anybody has any specific questions about what is different between the new version of building code and the stretch code, Joe can certainly answer that. But my understanding in talking with him and seeing these presentations multiple times now is that there isn't really much of a difference anymore. And the building code has caught up from an energy efficiency standpoint to what this program I think was advocating for and trying to do five, seven years ago. So for a town like Northborough, it's really not a stretch anymore, and immediately, as Jim mentioned, we have access to $145,000 in grant funds to increase our energy efficiency. We met with our legislative delegation earlier, and obviously budgets are tight, revenues aren't growing. It's important to look at all sources of grant funding, but also the economies and the efficiencies that come with the projects that we're talking about, because if you can get funding to implement some of these projects, then you, on an ongoing basis operationally, you'll be saving money as well because more energy efficient. So this is something the planning board had brought forward as well. We talked about it as staff, and it seems like if we were interested in doing it, this would be the time to move forward.
If I can just add just one thing, I think that, just that one thing that I'll add to that I mentioned before, I think that you had asked about, John, is that as adopting it, you can also un-adopt it. I know that it is always on a local concern, the building code does change every three years, and other towns have said, "Well, what happens in future additions?" And you bring it to town meeting and adopt it, you could bring it back to town meeting in three years and choose to un-adopt it, and I think that's always an important-
We're going to come back and take the insulation out of the ceiling, though.
No. But at the same time, I will say, we haven't had a community do that in the whole time we've been rolling it out, but I think it's always important to know at the local level that there is that option as well.
Thank you. Yes, Leslie.
First of all, I was riveted to what you had to say because you talk so fast that I couldn't miss a beat with what you said, so thank you. But the other thing I wanted to say is, to me, the good points, and it sounds like a great program to me, is that it only applies to new builds and commercial builds over 100,000 square feet. And the fact that, well, your last point I think was great, which is that it's really a net result that you're looking for. So there's a lot of flexibility with what can be done. It's not that it has to be A, B, C, D, and it has to equal E. You can go through a variety of things, as long as the net result is the number that you're looking for. It does provide a lot of flexibility, it sounds like, so.
Joe, I had a question. The local builders are aware of all this energy efficient things?
Yeah, so-
That's what I'd be worried about, you know, having the, any local builder's not up to doing the energy builds.
Yeah, so right now, the energy code has changed into the ninth edition. So the majority of builders now have to amend to the IECC 2015 edition, which is part of the ninth edition building code. That came into effect as of January 1st. So the stretch code, what it used to be, was like about a small pamphlet, you know, of recommendations and things that you had to follow. It's now one page, and everything pertains to new buildings. This book with these amendments here is the standard that they have to, at least minimum that they have to meet. So the majority of homes that are being built today, or commercial buildings that are being built today, are pretty close to the stretch code as it is. The only thing is, the way things are built today in the town of Northborough is that we're looking at the prescriptive method, and by adopting the stretch energy code, you'd be looking at the performance. So the performance is how does the building overall work, and how energy efficient is the building as a total package? Where if it's a prescriptive method, you're looking at how the building is built, and how does each individual assembly rate to the house itself? But without that performance, you don't really have a hard number to go by.
I'm sold. Go ahead, Don.
What's the number that is a passing score?
So you want at least around the 65 would be probably good enough for that. I think in one of his slides, he has it.
He had it at 65, but I didn't know if that was the passing score.
Sorry, this is, the current requirement is 55 for new construction?
Yep. So 65 is better than, goes up or down?
Lower the number, the better.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Reverse psychology. It is like golf.
Not like my golf.
Not my game.
And the 55 is the same for prescriptive and performance, it's just on the performance side, you're having that tested. That's the difference. There's no difference in the score between the prescriptive and the performance.
Right, Don.
Kathy, is there going to be a hearing so that all contractors can come in and hear this, or?
Well, we've actually, aside from your hearing tonight, and the, I mean, the main purpose is for us to introduce, you know, Green Community Program in general, and more specifically the Stretch Code. So your hearing obviously was advertised, and the purpose for the Board of Selectmen to hold the hearing is because what we're proposing at town meeting is that, you know, it's an addition to the town code. And it's not a zoning article, even though I am going to have a second hearing, which is much more widely advertised, and we haven't specifically mailed something out to the contractors, but I can certainly do that. You know, we put it on the website, we've mailed it to out to the, you know, usual parties of interest that we have to do. And the, so again, the change that you're looking at is to hold, you know, have a public hearing tonight, but adopting a new chapter. So it's chapter 2-18. In chapter two, in the town code, is where you find the building, building, I think, fire also. And so we, you know, looked at where this, you know, was short or would be a natural fit, and so we've come up with a, you know, the new chapter. I mean, it's in chapter two, but 2-18. So again, we'll have, you know, and again, part of what, you know, talking with Kelly, part of having it, you know, televised tonight was so that, you know, I don't know how many people, you know, do take advantage. I'm surprised, but people tell me they watch the Plenary Board meetings, or they've learned something from the Plenary Board meetings, so, I mean, this was just another way for us to get the message out also, by having it televised. So March 21st is the Plenary Board, will be the beginning of the Plenary Board public hearings.
Any other questions? I think it sounds good. Yeah.
I think it's a great program, and I think, you know, coming from Worcester, when the stretch code was actually a pamphlet, I found a lot of benefits to having that. I mean, it just costs savings over the longest period of time, you know, you only hold it 30 years. How long is it going to perform over that 30 years? And how long does it cost you to have maintenance and upkeep to the house, and run your, you know, your air conditioner, or your boiler, or whatever? At least you know where you have to stand right out of the gate with a brand new home.
That's the last point I'd make, is that this is becoming no longer a stretch, but the standard. And as you look at the communities around us, and you had a slide of Marlborough and Southborough, and, you know, it's becoming standard.
I guess, I'm surprised we haven't adopted it prior to that, because usually we're on the cutting edge of everything.
Well, you know, again, I think we gave this a really hard look about five years ago, and-
The stretch was a bit of a stretch.
It was.
It allowed uncertainty and concern.
And, you know, and there were builders that had concerns, and staff that had concerns. But I think with the building code catching up, at this point, it is such a minor distinction at this point that, you know, it makes sense to move forward. And again, that's why you're having public hearings, that's why, you know, this is a public hearing tonight, the planning board will have a public hearing, and certainly there'll be a discussion at town meeting like there is on anything that we adopt. And the town will weigh the pros and cons of it.
Go ahead.
Input.
Oh yeah, this is public hearing. Anybody from the public want to ask a question, or?
Make a comment.
I'll make a comment. Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing. Well, we appreciate it. The presentation, it was great.
Yeah, thank you.
Fast, too. It was even better.
I don't think I've ever heard a talk like that.
We like that, we talk fast, yeah.
You know, you have a full agenda, and, you know, we could ask them if they could-
Do the shortened version.
Jim, can I ask you a question? Is there a, do you have a canned presentation that we can perhaps get, that we can run on our local access for folks, or anything like that?
So many towns have reported me doing a whole one-hour job, probably my big idea is to prove the neighboring town that it could get it.
You don't have a generic one, though, that you-
I haven't, so Amherst asked me to do one, and I did one in a TV studio, talking to a wall. It was like, I would have, I would have, I'm much better in front of them.
With an audience?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Getting back on track, Kathy, due to town plan, a presentation of zoning town meeting warrant articles, if we're all still awake.
I know. Capital Z. So hopefully you have received, you know, your zoning packet and memorized it.
We have.
Okay, so there's nine articles on this year's town meeting warrant relating to zoning. The first article, however, like I just explained, is about the stretch code, so it's not a zoning article, but I thought it was just more comprehensive to have it, to have the Plenary Board also hold a public hearing, and they'll be doing the presentation at town meeting also, I believe George Pembroke, and then Joe and I will participate with that. So the first two articles, again, the first one has to do with the stretch energy code, the adoption of it, and then the second article, which is the true first zoning article, is also part of the stretch, I mean, excuse me, is also part of the green communities. And that meets one of the other criteria. As Jim and Kelly had discussed, there's five criteria that if you do want to become a green community, you need to meet all five. So this town meeting, we're hitting two of those. And if, in the future, if we don't become a green community, we're still ahead by these two first articles. Because again, the stretch code is only, it's only a good thing. And then the second one, which is the amending our definition for research and development, what we had to do in order to meet one of the criteria is, you have to include, and I was actually surprised that we didn't have this language in there already, but you have to make reference to renewable and alternative, you know, technologies. So something, you know, by placing it in your zoning, it's something that you were, you know, encouraging. So that's the first true zoning article, is just revising our existing definition for research and development. The third article has to do with our table of uses, and this was brought forth by one of the Plenary Board members, who had done, you know, some of her own research in town and came to the Plenary Board, and, I mean, as a Plenary Board member, but presented to the Plenary Board that she would like to see changes made to the use table having to do with auto repair shops and auto body shops. So the Plenary Board, you know, came together and supported this as a whole, and so what they're proposing is, right now, auto repair shops are allowed as a special permit in three of our business districts, our Business East and Business West, which is basically, you know, along West Main Street to the Marlborough line, and then along West Main Street and part of Southwest cutoff, you know, to the west. And then Business South, which is primarily the Lawrence Street and Otis Street areas, which is more of an industrial district, but it is labeled Business South. So they're proposing that auto repair shops would now no longer be allowed in those three districts. And then as far as the, in the same category in our table of uses, there's a separate definition for what's called an auto body shop. And right now, someone would have to obtain a special permit in order to do an auto body shop in the Business West district. And so they're proposing that that also becomes prohibited. And then it leaves these uses in the industrial districts. So they do still have a home if people were to apply for either one of these uses, but they, if this passed, but they wouldn't be allowed in these particular business districts. So that's-
Any questions on that one?
I'm sure there are.
I would assume anyone that already has a business would be grandfathered.
Exactly, completely grandfathered. And also, if you, if someone has a business and then they sell their business, you know, but it's to another auto body shop, you know, that stays, you know, grandfathered. So that can keep changing hands.
So in other words, there's no adverse economic impact to existing businesses of those types in those zones?
Correct. Every existing business, it's the same thing that happened with gas stations a couple years ago, where gas stations are now prohibited in all the business districts, they can, only new gas stations could be allowed in the industrial districts. So it's the same thing. Everyone that's in existence today is good forever.
I have concerns that, what are we trying to do to a small businessman? What happens if someone wants to open one? I have a concern about that. I'm not, you know, against it, I'm just, we don't want to deter a business.
No, that's valid, and like I said, there are still zoning districts where they will be allowed. But the discussion largely focused on that they felt that they were enough in town, and that any future ones, they would like to see not on the main streets. They'd like to see them, you know, more in an industrial area.
Looking to clarify that, you know, the ones that are there now, when they can change ownership, they would be considered existing in other form of use if there's a two-year window, so, you know, the established facilities that are there now could be sold to another at the deed and still maintain, you know, the auto bodies, sort of, auto repair.
So the fourth and fifth articles relate to multifamily development in town. Presently multifamily, well, since 2009, multifamily is a use that's allowed by special permit, and again, only in certain districts. And today, multifamily is allowed in what's called the downtown business district, which is just what you'd think it would be, you know, right downtown, and the Business West, which again is, you know, heading towards the Shrewsbury Town Line. So, you know, pretty much from St. Rose's and, you know, the post office, up to, you know, Bigelow's, and then up the Southwest cutoff. So today, the multifamily is by a special permit, which we would, you know, we're proposing to keep it as a special permit. But today, you can have a maximum of eight units of multifamily. Typically, it's done in townhouse style, and so we're proposing to bring that down to six. There's been a lot of concerns raised at Plenary Board meetings, zoning board of appeals meetings, just residents in general, you know, coming, you know, coming in or calling, and not completely comfortable with how multifamily has developed in town. I think the majority of it has to do with the scale, and really the topography of where these particular developments have been constructed. So what we're looking at is trying to decrease the number, see if six is a little more palatable to people. And then we're also increasing the size of the lot that you need to have. So initially, you need to have two units, you need to have 20,000 square feet, so that's about half an acre. Today, for any unit over two units, you need 3,500 square feet, and what we're proposing to do is to double that. So what you'll end up with is less units on more land. And so we're hoping that that's a start to bring down the scale and the density of, you know, how these- And so we're hoping that that, that's a start to bring down the, the scale and the density of, of, you know, how these, this type of development appears to people driving by.
Questions on that? So you'd basically double in the size of the lot?
Yeah, the initial, the initial lot that you need, half an acre, that stays the same. And then for every unit, so bringing it down to six units, so your third, fourth, fifth and sixth unit, each one of those units would need 7,000 square feet. So, so basically, to do six units, you need a little bit over an acre. If that, if that's easier to visualize.
I can visualize, yeah.
So again, in some communities, that's pretty dense, you know, they, they, you know, they, they probably wouldn't even consider that. But I mean, to look at six units on a little over an acre, you know, I, I, I think that's, that's, you know, something that's, that's a good compromise. In still allowing to do multifamily, but again, like I said, bringing down the density. The, the sixth article is really just, you know, we love to use the term housekeeping with zoning. And this really is one of those, we're not changing, this has to do with common driveways, excuse me, it has, so it's, it's the regulations for how, the specs basically for how you build a common driveway. And right now, we have a set of specs in the zoning bylaw and we have a much more detailed set in the subdivision rules and regs. So it's just, it's just going to be cleaner, we're, we're taking out the regulations or the specifications in the zoning and just making a reference, go see the subdivision rules and regs. And that's, like I said, that's where the more details are. So we're not changing, you know, how you build a common driveway, we're not changing, you know, the standards, we're not changing how many lots can be on a common driveway. We're just telling people, you know, instead of going to the zoning now, you're all going to be in the subdivision rules and regs as far as the, the regulations for it.
But the actual common drive regulations aren't changing, like the size or?
Right, correct, yep. And so it's a special permit, it's always been a special permit through the Planning Board. I don't think a common driveway has ever probably been denied. It's just, it's always a matter of, you know, engineering, of, you know, having it redesigned if there's, if there's ever an issue with it not meeting I regs.
Any questions?
Number seven has to do with a one-year temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments. So we've, you know, I know this has been discussed before at this board. We've had many conversations at the Planning Board level. But in working with town council, because of the fact that there, you know, the ballot question obviously was adopted. But there still are no regulations in place at the state level. So town council is suggesting to, you know, their, you know, clients, that not a bad idea to put a moratorium in place, a temporary moratorium. And it's something that the Attorney General's Office has been very supportive of, they've already approved several of them from other communities. And it's really just a one-year timeframe to allow the state to put their regulations together and then for us as a community to, you know, react to those regulations and then figure out, you know, how, how we want to regulate this. You know, does it, does it matter? Maybe people don't want to regulate it, maybe it doesn't matter where these establishments, you know, may go. Or, you know, maybe we want to be very specific about where, what zoning districts. So that's all something that we, if the moratorium was adopted, that's all something that we would work, I mean, in the next year.
We tried, remember at town meeting to have an area?
For medical, for medical marijuana.
Yeah, it didn't pass.
It did not, it did not, it did not gain the support at, at town meeting. People, at least at that particular town meeting, people felt that, or the takeaway that I had was that, you know, they, they didn't feel that it had to be confined to one area in town.
I'm going to make a, just make a comment. Kathy, we all read in the paper, Town of Westboro has opted out. This moratorium, does, does this moratorium preclude us from going down that path if the community so chooses?
No, town council, I asked that question of Copeland and Page and it does not preclude us.
So there's no downside. If we do this, it's not as though we're committing to anything. This just hits the pause button and we can regulate as Kathy says, as Kathy indicated, or we can opt out as some of our neighboring communities have. But it provides a little time for a more, a more thorough discussion.
Kathy, is this similar to the medical moratorium that a lot of communities adopted? And medical marijuana came out?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the tempor, you know, as far as a moratorium, yeah, giving yourself more time as a community to, to investigate how you want to regulate it.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I was just, this, this also, because recreational marijuana has no impact or anything on the existing facility we have down in, which is cultivation.
Cultivation, it's different.
Medical marijuana, right?
Correct.
And the product produced there is used only for medical purposes, so there's no.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct. They, actually, that facility isn't, isn't up and operating yet. They've made it through all of the, I think it was three cycles that they had to go through with the Department of Public Health, you know, at the state level. And then now they will, I'm actually expecting it probably within the next couple of months, they will apply, you know, at the local level to go through the site plan review process. But, you know, they're still pursuing the Lawrence Street site.
Thank you.
Your honor.
The next article, Article Eight, is an article that, again, that the Planning Board is proposing. And this is, again, a temporary moratorium, and, but this particular subject is on duplexes. And the Planning Board, for probably at least the past six months, has had some extensive discussions about the, the number of duplexes that have been built in town. The size of the duplexes in particular. That's the, the complaints that we, the complaints and the concerns that, that we receive from residents mainly has to do with the size of the, of the duplexes. They've, you know, year by year, and we, you know, we've tracked this through the, the building department, you know, building permits. They're, you know, they're, they're, they're large. The, so that was sort of where the conversation started with the Planning Board. And we started to look at how to regulate that. And we were heading down the path of looking at increasing the lot size and, and increasing the setbacks and the, and the frontage that was required. And again, it becomes a density issue and, and just, you know, sort of an overall appearance. And there's, there's been a lot of concern with, of, of a few particular developments that have occurred in town. That, that people are concerned that they're very out of place for what, what they did replace for, you know, say the small, you know, eight, 900 square foot ranch. And then what was built on the same site is now almost a 4,000 square foot building, which is, you know, three bedrooms, three baths on each side. And so, so we started having the discussions and I had actually drafted bylaws about increasing lot size and increasing setbacks. And just, you know, trying to work with the scale of these, of these residential units. And so not controlling what the size of them could be, but again, by increasing all these other dimensions, it would, you know, help with the scale, the overall appearance. So, so we started down that path and then recently, the Planning Board started looking at some other ways that, that they might want to regulate this. So it got to the point where it became a much bigger issue than just, you know, looking at, at, you know, changing some lot sizes. And then we got, they got into a discussion about, you know, that perhaps this really is more of a topic for the master plan that, that we're going to start to undertake this summer. And so what they concluded at their last meeting was that instead of, you know, obviously rushing something forward, they would like to incorporate it into the master plan as, as part of the, you know, land use development chapter. And, and in the meantime, propose a temporary moratorium for a year period on people being able to apply for a duplex. You need a special permit in order to develop a duplex in one of the residential areas. They're allowed by right in another area, general residential. So, but, so this would encompass both of those zoning districts though. So no special permits would be granted and no building permits would be allowed under the temporary moratorium.
I, I have concerns with affordability. I mean, we want to keep Northboro affordable, this is making it so it's not affordable. You know what I mean? I'm just being careful what road we're going down. You know, I can see some changes, but a moratorium is not allowing it is, I don't think it's the right path. My, my opinion only. Yes, Leslie?
Yeah, I, I'm, I didn't realize that this was such an issue. Moratorium sounds like a big deal to me, to prevent people from being able to apply to build those. And I agree with Bill in terms of affordability in Northboro. So I would love to hear more about how big a deal this really is. And when you say that people are complaining and so forth, you know, how many people are complaining and how often are they complaining? You know, what is, what does that really mean? So I guess that's an area where I've, I've got some concerns as well.
That's, you know, whether the moratorium passes or not, I think including it as part of the master plan makes a lot more, or makes the most sense to me. Because you've got, you've got a much broader audience, you're going to be having, you know, weekend workshops, you know, you know, trying to attract as many residents as possible. Surveys, you know, public surveys to see, you know, what, what really is the, the temperature out there for, for this type of development.
Yes, Don.
We talked about a temporary moratorium. What is a temporary moratorium? What's the period on this?
One year. That's what the Attorney General's Office allows, is, is up to a year. Because what you, what you do within that year, just like we did with, you know, or will do with recreational marijuana if it passes, is you, the proposal is that you'll come back to the next town meeting with either changes, you know, proposed changes, or you'll have determined that nothing was needed and then, and the moratorium is then lifted.
Thank you.
Yes, Jason.
If you could, I wouldn't mind getting a list of maybe some of the sites that have received, been the subject of complaints.
Sure.
Just to be able to do a drive-by, a picture's worth a thousand words, I guess.
Yep.
Kind of see the effects that people are concerned about.
Yep, I can put that list together.
I think they're talking about the one next to the Dairy Hut. Cause you said a small.
No, actually, that's, people are very pleased with that one.
Like that one.
There's one on Hudson Street that, that has raised a lot of questions. It's been up a couple of years now, but that's one in, in particular. That's where, it was a very small house that was taken down and, and a very large duplex was, was put up. Right next to the senior, the senior housing.
Oh, 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 next, right on Hudson Street, right after Trinity Church on the right-hand.
Yeah, it's just a couple of houses down from Trinity Church.
I remember with groundwater.
No, I just think, well, it's an interesting comment that you make when you say, you know, there was a small ranch there and now it's been replaced by something larger. I'm not sure why that's bad necessarily. I mean, you know, you're talking about people, maybe they look out their window and they saw something small for 25 years and now they're seeing something larger. I don't, you know, does it affect what their, you know, the horizon that they're looking at? I'm not quite sure what the concern is with that, so. Oh, I would just like further explanation, that's all.
I understand.
The last point to be made, this is obviously because we're going to be closing the warrant tonight. This is just information about what's coming forward from the Planning Board for the warrant. But I would just remind everybody that the Planning Board's hearing on these are, is scheduled for March 21st at 7:00 PM, I'm assuming?
At 7:30.
7:30. So if you want to hear more about them or comment on them, that would be your opportunity.
Is that what it is? Oh, no.
No, the.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at April.
Tuesday.
I'm just wishing.
I won't be here if it's Friday.
I just wish it was April. Cause it's tomorrow, but that's okay.
Excuse me. And then, then the very last one is just something that, before the moratorium idea was proposed as staff, what we want to do is, is add duplexes to the site plan review process. It's, we have multifamily, it's just about everything is in the site plan review process except for duplexes. And because of the sort of abundance and how popular duplexes have become, you know, it's, it's a type of development that we should take a look at as staff. And talk about, you know, the driveways, making sure there's site distance, making sure the drainage is okay, you know, looking at, you know, the grading on the site. So it's, it's not, it's, it's all part, it would become all part of the process that they have to go through now with special permits, not adding any additional time. So we wanted to add it to the site plan review section so that, you know, so people have to go through the, that process. But if the moratorium is put in place, then we would pass over this and then, and come back with it next year.
Joe, you were CC'd on that. What are, what are your views on some of these?
So I think when the duplex is coming in, a lot of the builders are looking to utilize small plots planned and make as much money as possible on it. So the guys, the builders are coming in, they're building these larger duplexes and they're selling off each side for, I've seen some up to $500,000 a side. So a building that they've built for $315,000, they're making a million dollars. You see what I'm saying?
They do.
You know, it's not so much that it's affordable, you know, to have the duplex. What they're doing is they're maximizing how much money they can make on a small piece of land. That's what I've seen from just the building permit fees that are being paid for and what they're applying for in the size of the buildings. It's like purchasing a 2,500 square foot home per side. It's not like they're coming into a thousand square feet per side and it's something for a starter family. This is for people that want to come in and they just, they're trying to make as, as much as they can. That's what it seems to be.
My concerns is about the affordability piece, you know, like if my kids want to live in Northboro, they can't afford a $700,000 house, but they could maybe afford one side of a duplex. I mean, that's my thought process on that.
Yeah, and that used to be the way it was. It really, really was. If you wanted to, if you couldn't afford a single-family home of your own, it, it used to be that you'd split the house with somebody else, you'd purchase a side. Whether they use it as a condo or two-family, however they, they worked it. But you would purchase a side and it was a good way to get your feet wet with, with a home and start off that way and then maybe move into your own single-family home. However, the way it's being approached by builders now is what can I offer people and make as much money on it as possible? And some people, you know, in conversations that I've had, are locking themselves into these duplexes and not being able to move out of them to afford another home because, you know, they, they purchased this one for $500,000 or whatever they're costing.
Thanks, Kathy.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along, reports. Jason.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Two items. One, I want to thank the DPW Department with their cat-like reflexes for responding to my complaint about a damaged roadway sign at the last meeting. The sign's been removed and I understand from DPW Director Scott Schoppen here that Mass Department of Transportation's been notified because it's technically their sign. So they're taking steps to determine what to do about it, but that situation's been addressed, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
Attorney Fred told me this morning the sign's up.
It is.
It's a trident sign, find out.
There you go.
Trident meaning?
Trident as in the three spikes of a.
Oh, yeah.
Not going anywhere.
Not one.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate that. And then, as everyone knows, we're going to get a bit of a dusting tomorrow. So as usual, in Jeff's absence, I'll kind of fill in a blank here and ask everyone to keep an eye on their sidewalks and fire hydrants in addition to their driveways. Keep everything clear so that the emergency services, if they have to respond to something, have the best possible circumstances to do it. That concludes my report.
First of all, I just want to thank Chief Liver and Chief Parenti for your monthly departmental reports. We really appreciate those. A lot of detail, a lot of nice pictures and graphs and stories and things of interest, statistics, so thank you very much for those. Also, I wanted to mention that according to the National Council for Home Safety and Security, Northboro ranks among the top 50 in the safest places, places to live of 351 cities and towns in Commonwealth, and that's impressive. I, I think there are a lot of departments to thank for something like that, but I think in this particular situation, we need to thank the police department because that was based on crime statistics pretty, I think, pretty completely. So that's, that's very impressive to fall in that category, so thank you very much to you and your department for that. And let's see, oh, just good luck tomorrow, Scott. Thank you very much in advance.
He's not going home, he's just staying here.
Thank you very much. That ends my report.
Thank you. Don.
Any announcements that any of you public safety people wanted to make about tomorrow, other than stay off the road?
Stay home.
Yeah.
Stay off the road, please.
I, I did participate in a conference call shortly before the meeting tonight with the state, with the EMDs. There were over 300 people on the conference call. And, oh, yeah, but I was amazed, typically when I did a conference call like this in New Hampshire, there would be 20 questions. There was like, one question. The question was really irrelevant, to be honest with you. And what they said after 10 minutes was, it's going to snow tomorrow, so be careful.
We're used to that.
It was, it was a good half hour of discussion that tells us it's going to snow. It's going to be worse further southeast, it's going to be heavy and wet in the southeast.
Yep.
A lot of power outages anticipated.
Yep.
Hopefully, if it storm stays further out, it won't be that way. If the storm comes, comes further west, then we could have some problems.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Your report.
John? Just a couple of items. One, I just wanted to announce from your last meeting in executive session that the town has reached a memorandum of agreement with the Northborough Municipal Employees Association. The agreement includes a 2% wage increase for fiscal '17, '18, and '19. And the town previously settled collective bargaining contracts with the fire, police, unions, and the dispatch union for wage increases of 2% in fiscal '18 and '19. So, this is good news for us in that the contracts are, have all settled. And I, I just want to say that all the employee groups conducted themselves very professionally, and we were able to get a, a wage increase that matches what we discussed back in December when we did our financial trend monitoring, as we looked out what can, what could we afford for general wage increases. So, so that was taken care of at your, at your last meeting, so I just wanted to announce that. The other thing is that we are having some discussions right now with all the employees regarding health insurance. And we have begun meeting with the Insurance Advisory Committee. And we've decided that, we've done a pretty informal meeting with this group. So, I've been here 14 years, and I've worked for the town for 14 years. The Insurance Advisory Committee's been a very informal group. In the last eight years, we've had, on average, an increase in health insurance of about 2.6%. So, things have been very contained and very steady, which has been wonderful for us. You heard our legislative delegation talking about the Affordable Care Act and all the uncertainty. So, there's a lot of uncertainty with regard to health insurance. So, we are having discussions with the Insurance Advisory Committee. We've determined that we want to organize ourselves a little bit more formally. It's really an employee group. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 32B, Section 3, it has designations from each of the bargaining units. But there's also a designation from retirees. And under the, in checking with town council, that's the board's appointment. We met last week, we have another meeting coming up this Thursday. In an interest of time, if, if, if it serves the board, I'd ask that you, you delegate that appointment authority to me, so we can get somebody on that committee right away, so it doesn't slow down discussions with the employees about possible plan design changes in areas where we might be able to save some money in the upcoming fiscal year, because our renewals are coming in much higher, I think, than anybody anticipated. It's the main topic right now among my colleagues. The renewal rates are, just because of mostly the uncertainty of what's happening at the federal level. There's a lot of folks that are just shocked by the level of the renewals, so, but that's where we are. So, in order to keep the discussion going, I would ask that you, you think about allowing me to designate that retiree representative.
By agreement, doesn't it, John? By agreement?
Yes.
Jason?
Very good. I appreciate it. The last piece of news is, in case anybody, you guys are here late tonight, staff, thank you for staying. Most of you, two chiefs, sorry, and DPW, sorry.
So, really, it's nobody. Everybody's got a work.
But, Kathy, you can, you can have the day. No, they, I was checking, I had Kim checking during the meeting, we were waiting for the governor, who's going to circle back. And, and basically, he's closing state offices, all nonessential personnel off the road. It's going to be a bad storm, so I'm going to close town offices at this point. All of our, the neighboring communities are doing the same thing. Again, it's at the request of, of the state to keep people off the road. The last time that this happened, most people stayed off the road. And frankly, it was a very quiet storm from a public safety standpoint, no issues with the plows, no calls, no emergencies. Let's hope that we see something similar this time around. So, we will get that up on the website and we'll post the buildings. But since we're going to make the decision now, I figured I would announce it. And that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, public comment. Come on, come, come on right up there, say your, your name and your address and where you're from and what your question is. We'll see if we can help you.
So, my name is Julian Hirsch. I'm from Northborough. And I have a question about your letter to Governor Baker, where you outlined your legislative priorities.
Yes.
So, it's the last half, the last sentence of the last priority, which is the agricultural composting.
Let me get to it, hold on. The last line is our goal?
Right.
Okay.
To regulate all commercial composting operations through DEP and to have local land use regulations and zoning applied. So, how would that help a problem at Zero Green Street specifically?
Well, taking aside, I'm sorry, I apologize, through the, through the chair. Specifically, taking us, taking aside any, any specific composting operations that we have right now, in general, in general, if the composting has to go through local zoning, land use regulations, that would basically allow the town to put reasonable restrictions and constraints on, on such an operation. I'll use an example. Any business operation that occurs, first of all, we separate incompatible uses. That's why you have land use and zoning regulations. But any business that gets brought into town, you can control things, everything from hours of operations to truck traffic, to buffers, things of that nature. Right now, composting, specifically agricultural composting, is exempt from all local regulations. And so, one of the things that we've asked the legislature to do is to look at this issue. And we've worked with a number of other communities who have had similar concerns and issues. But the goal is to have local land use zoning and regulations apply, just as it would to any other, any other use, and not have it be exempt where it's just allowed and we, we don't regu- have any ability to regulate it at all, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
That answers your question?
Thank you for waiting.
Sorry.
That answers your question?
Um, yeah, in general, yep. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, new business. Discussion once again regarding town trash bags. Fred? This was bought up by Leslie, right?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Fred.
How are you? I understand that there was some concern about all of the trash bags. I had issued a memo, for each of you, you should have it in your packet. Basically, the memo, I described the program that started in 2003. January of 2003, we opted to buy bags from an initial vendor. And for about four or five years, we bought bags that didn't have the drawstring, they had a twist tie. There are a number of complaints from the residents indicating that that was difficult to close and get it out onto the curb. So, we looked for a company that had a drawstring and was also available to purchase from on the state bid list. And we opted to buy from the company that we now buy bags from. They've since changed names, but it's still the same company. And we've been buying bags from them for about 10 years now. The number of complaints that I get in my office, I have to tell you, is not, in my opinion, significant. We address them as reasonably as we can. Anyone who calls or tells me that they have defective bags, they're encouraged to bring them to the town hall, to the engineering department, and a sleeve of bags is replaced with the sleeve that's brought in. We get, I get more complaints than I get sleeves. People don't take the time to bring them into the town hall, and I need the bag back that's defective in order to turn it into the manufacturer to have them evaluate where, where the stock is, that it was, which year it was from. Because we have so many stores that sell the bags, and they buy them at various rates, and they sell them at various rates, it's hard to say that every bag that's purchased came from this year's supply. Sometimes they're held over from the previous year or, or further, I don't know. So, again, so that everyone out there knows, I'm happy to replace the bags if there's a problem. In the office, we keep a supply just for that purpose, and we do get credit from the company that we buy them for if they're defective. We have a couple of retailers who sell the bags for us, specifically Rockies, who sells the majority of bags. And their policy has been to just replace bags with ones that they have, and then they contact me and I supply them. That's only happened twice, I think, for a total of four sleeves of bags, not even a whole case. A case includes 250 individual bags. Again, it hasn't, in my opinion, been significant. The one other thing I would point out is that when we switch to the drawstring, and up until very recently, the company that we buy the bags from is the only one that provides a drawstring. Recently, there's a, a third vendor, there's three on the state bid list, two of them now provide a bag with a drawstring. So, if there's a problem that persists, and after tonight's meeting, and being on television, I get inundated with calls and bags being returned, we will evaluate with the manufacturer, and we will pursue another vendor if need be.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Thanks for putting the memo together. I appreciate that, and I appreciate you being here. The reason I brought it up is because there was a Facebook conversation thread that went on. And quite frankly, I was surprised, because really, quite a few people chimed in about it. So, you know, for some people, there's a little bit of an underlying issue with the bags. And, and I think when someone started a conversation about it, people didn't feel like they could chime in about it, which was good, because there's some sort of undercurrent of people being unhappy with some of the bags. And I, if you don't mind, I wanted to just read a few of the comments, which I thought were kind of interesting. I'll say some of these verbatim, so they're kind of fun. "Ripping trash bags make me crazy. The stickers would be great, less trash if we didn't have to double-bag anymore." I guess in some communities, people purchase stickers and then just stick those to regular, say, a hefty bag that you would buy at the grocery store. So, that was something that somebody had brought up. Actually, a couple of people brought that up. A lot of people mentioned the fact that they have to duct tape their bags. Some people wait till the end of the week, they get out a large green bag and put all their, try to put their other white bags in it. Or they put out the white, say, hefty bag, and attach a green Northborough bag to it, I guess to show that they have purchased the, the green bag, but they don't want to use the green bag.
Kind of as a sticker.
Kind of like a sticker, yeah. But what, I guess someone was told that they weren't allowed to do that, so the trash got left. Is that allowed?
We have had, on occasion, allowed residents to tie a bag to another bag that's stronger because of the weight. It was a, it was a couple of individual incidents where somebody had a, a gentleman had a pig roast, and he had a very large hefty bag that would hold that, and he tied a large bag around it. The company is allowed, the drivers are allowed a little bit of discretion to make sure that the size of the bag that they're using is similar to the size of the bag that they purchased.
Okay, that's a good point.
We're not, we're not allowing them to put a small bag on a huge contractor's trash bag.
Yeah.
But again, we're not at the curb, the driver and the laborer on the back are allowed a little bit of discretion. They have been asked to, to be aware that that situation may need to occur on occasion. But it's not, I've not told anyone they couldn't do that.
Okay, okay. Uh, let's see, I feel maybe a change. Oh, recycling came up too. A lot of people said that they, not a lot, but a few people in here said that they recycle as much as they throw in the trash. Is there a possibility of going to weekly recycling?
Well, as you may recall, a number of years ago, when the Solid Waste Advisory Committee was put together, they studied a number of things. One of them was the sticker program that you referred to earlier. And one of them was weekly trash, and one of them was the, the toter for trash, as opposed to recycling. And it, it seemed from the research that we did, as I recall, the weekly recycling cost us twice as much, but didn't provide any more volume to be recycled. So, it was, it was a increase, a significant increase in expense for no measurable benefit.
Okay.
It was not like we would double the amount of recycling, people just wouldn't have to hold on to it. It's really a convenience that the program can't afford to, to supply, I don't believe.
Okay. So, anyway, I think that kind of summarized it. But I actually have here, you know, five pages of comments. So, people really did comment on that, and I did tell them that you would be coming to the meeting, that they're welcome to, to tune in or to come to the meeting. And if their, if their issues weren't addressed, that they should feel free to write to you, to write to me, and let you know what other issues they were having. So, I guess basically, in summary, what I saw was that people felt that the bags ripped very easily, that they use regular, regular bags, and then either fill the green bag later with them, or they tie the green bag to the white bag. And suggestions were simply the recycling every week, which we just talked about, and possibly using stickers for regular bags, as opposed to buying green bags. So, that's the summary of this.
The sticker is problematic in the size of the bag that it gets put on, isn't regulated. The way we, our program runs, you know, we have very set controls on the volume that you can get in there, although some people try to squeeze a little bit more in there, and, and they will rip if you exceed them. Even if you don't exceed them, I know that one of the issues was with the drawstring. During the manufacturing process, there's an amount of heat that's applied to that hem where the drawstring goes through on the top. If that heat is too much or too little, I guess there's not much of a leeway there between too much or too little, then the, then the seal breaks, and then the string pulls through, and you can't tie it.
Is that why they're ripping, you think, the drawstring or the actual whole bag itself?
Both.
The, the drawstring, from, from the complaints I have received, the drawstring is a separate issue than the ripping. The ripping is people are putting stuff in and they're splitting on the sides, not necessarily the seam. And we did, as you may recall, one of the other conversations that we had about the quality of the trash bags, the manufacturer did incorporate some fibers in the resin, which allowed it to stretch a little bit more and make it a little less susceptible to ripping. That's when we talked about that slightly darker shading on the inside being a way to tell if it's that particular bag. That process is still being used. Again, there are times when...
Yeah, okay. All right, so one vendor's being used. I think, I do want to reemphasize the fact that they can contact you, they can come in with the defective bag, and they can get replacement bags.
No questions asked. My staff all knows that if someone comes in with some defective bags, we just exchange for a new sleeve, we keep the old ones, and we will return them to the company, and we will either get a credit. And like I said, if after tonight, we're inundated with a lot of complaints, a significant, I mean, we have to get a large number of bags in order to just get up to one case. We buy approximately 100,000 bags per size per year. And they're stored in a warehouse in Worcester, they're distributed to the various vendors weekly. The vendors that store the bag, that gentleman calls each of the stores weekly to see how many packages or cases they would want to have, and then they're, they're delivered. And so, we buy them once a year, we just made a purchase in December, so we're good for a good part of the year. But as the year goes on, we will put those bags aside if there's a significant amount. We are happy to look at another vendor that is available now to switch over to, to manufacture the bags for us.
I have one last question. I did notice in some of the bags previously that there was a gray lining.
Yes.
But yet, I don't notice that now in any of the bags I have.
I believe that the fibers have been incorporated into the bags without the need for the gray.
I see, okay. Okay, helpful information, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks a lot.
All right, oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. As John's mentioned, town hall's closed tomorrow, trash is also, trash and recycling has been canceled for tomorrow, and the rest of the week will continue on a one-day delay.
Okay.
There's an announcement on the website.
Thank you.
Tried to reach out to everyone we could, but... Tried to reach out to everyone we could, but long as we're here.
Appreciate you mentioning that.
Okay.
Thank you, Fred.
All right, next thing is closing the town meeting warrant, which we have in your packet.
No major changes from the, from the list of articles previously. You've got a little bit more information regarding the CPC and the zoning that we've talked about tonight. At this point, it'd be appropriate for the board to close the warrant, and then we finalize the, the budget figures and some of the language working with town council between now and your next meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, remove the board vote to close the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Hear a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none. Polls in favor. Closed. Any other business come before the board? Hearing none. Next thing on the, the new business executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Subsection 3 litigation. Due to the chair's determination at a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board, and will only be coming out of executive session to adjourn from regular open meetings. Thank you for coming.